1.3 use table pertaining to small box discount retailers. This text amendment is countywide and who will be speaking to this, Mr. Baker?
Yes. Good evening, Presiding Officers and Members of the Commission. As you are aware, we've been going through a study dealing with the small box retail. And part of tonight's presentation is for the Georgia State Representative, which is Dr. Dean Dabney and Dr. Daigle to give a presentation. Before they make their presentation, which will be a more comprehensive results of their study, I did want to highlight the experience of this team. I did want to just point out that Dr. Dabney has a sociologist's degree, a master's degree also in criminology, as well as a bachelor's degree. He currently serves as the-
Small box.
Yes, small box.
He currently serves as the Chair of the, at Georgia State University in the Department of Criminal Justice. Also, he has numerous publications dealing with disparity as well as crime, health, and equity. It's been published in the British Journal of Criminology, Criminal Justice Policy Review, the Howard Journal of Criminal Justice, as well as the American Journal of Criminal Justice. He's got numerous awards, Outstanding Book Awards, Excellence in Teaching Award, and Faculty Leadership Award. Ms. Daigle also comes with high qualifications with a doctora as well. She's also a professor at GSU. She's got awards such as Outstanding Mentor Award, Best Paper Award for Minorities and Women in Criminology Science. She's been identified as one of the top 100 criminologists and scholars. She also has numerous publications. And so they will be giving you some information about their study related to small box discount retailers.
All right, Dr. Dabney?
Thank you, Mr. President, Officer and Commission Members. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Baker, for the introduction. We'll jump right into things so we can get through it as quickly as possible. A little bit of background, DeKalb County passed a moratorium in January of 2020 because of concerns related to small box discount retailers having negative influence on public safety, food access, property values. That moratorium continues. We were contracted by the law office to conduct a study looking into the nature of those relationships. And we provided reports and this PowerPoint presentation to DeKalb County Law Office and Planning Sustainability. Small box discount retailers, they are defined as any retail store 16,000 square feet or less, which offers a sale of variety of convenient shopping goods and continuously offers the majority of the items in the inventory at a sale price. We went about crafting a study methodology to allow us to assess the concerns that were raised. In particular, we started off with a comprehensive review of the existing literature, in particular as it relates to the statutory landscape on existing local zoning requirements specific to small box discount retailers. We also reviewed the existing trade and scholarly literature on the topic. We used both qualitative and quantitative analysis techniques to investigate how the presence in small box discount retailers are related to safety and security features, crime outcomes, food access, food availability and pricing, as well as residential property values in the surrounding areas. We draw direct comparisons to local and large grocery stores, convenience stores, and retail pharmacies as a means of exploring the relative impact of small box discount retailers in unincorporated DeKalb County. For clarification, unincorporated DeKalb, as of 2020, when we started the study, included 121 full census tracts and 294 census block groups. In terms of the review of the existing literature, small box discount retailers, from a descriptive standpoint, they tend to rely on lean staffing models, competitive pricing, and strategic store location. The different retailers that are prominent in that, in particular Dollar General, Dollar Tree, and Family Dollar, have different marketing strategies. I'm not going to get into that, but there is some variability in terms of the approach and the target customer base. They have experienced rapid expansion to the point in 2019, national reports were that there were 30,000 locations available, open for operation in Georgia. In 2017, reports showed that there were just under 15,000. That made Georgia the 11th most populous state in terms of small box discount retailers. The existing trade and scholarly literature shows that food deserts and retail, food deserts are linked to different retail types. And those food deserts produce negative health and quality of life outcomes for the folks who live in them. Again, a food desert is defined as a low-income census tract where at least 33% of the population is with, is at least a mile or farther away from a grocery store with fresh food. Literature also shows a number of studies that establish a relationship between various types of retailers and higher crime. So that justifies the pursuit of that line of inquiry. And also that various retail types are associated with increase and decrease property values. In terms of the statutory landscape, we relied heavily on a study that was done by the Laurie M. Tisch Food and Center for Food Education and Policy at Columbia University that collected data on pending and finalized local zoning actions as they relate to small box discount retailers. As of 2020, that study had found 26 jurisdictions either concluding or in the process of zoning restrictions. In terms of our quantitative research design, we gathered and cleaned official data for the time period of 2015 through 2019 from various DeKalb County agencies, the Centers for Disease Control, and the U.S. Census Bureau. First, we gathered information from the DeKalb County Department of Planning Sustainability, a business license database that identified 75 small box discount retailers that were in operation at some point during the study period, 2015 to 2019. Changes in the number were driven by corporatization, meaning the growth of those three large retail chains that I mentioned earlier, a divestiture that resulted from the consolidation of those company, those corporations, that were court ordered to close stores in various locations close to one another in terms of Family Dollar and Dollar Tree. And then the incorporation, city incorporations within DeKalb County that happened between 2015 and 2019. So by year end in 2019, there were 43 small box discount retailers operating across 29 different census tracts in unincorporated DeKalb. In terms of our comparisons, comparison groups, the database, the clean database showed 163 convenience stores, 44 grocery stores, and 36 retail pharmacies in operation during that study period. We got crime reports from the DeKalb County Police Department. We got tax digest data from the Tax Assessor's Office. We got information on food desert and food insecurity from the Centers of Disease Control. And we got community level demographic data from the 2020 Census Bureau. Our quantitative analyses that we'll present here involve producing GIS maps to overlay the location of different retail establishments as it relates to crime, food access, insecurity, and also property values. And then we conducted a series of statistical modeling to estimate the relationship between the presence of small box discount retailers, the clustering of them, multiple and small locations, and also the change in the number from time opening new stores from year to year. In each case, we look at the existence of change in one year and lag that to the outcomes in subsequent years. In terms of the qualitative research design, we did site visits to a host of the retail locations. In particular, we drew samples from across the various commission districts in DeKalb and visited 19 small box discount retailers, 11 large chain grocery stores, six local grocery stores, 13 retail pharmacies, and 18 convenience stores. Upon each visit, we went into the store and determined safety and security features to include whether or not there were more than one cashier on duty, whether or not there were clear sightlines in the aisles that allow for effective security surveillance, the cleanliness of the store in terms of a measure of social disorder, whether or not they had closed circuit cameras in the store, and whether or not they had a merchandise tracking system. That's the shoplifting detection systems at the front door that alarm when merchandise leaves without being paid for. On the outside of each store, we looked at their general appearance to determine whether it met kind of the standard of upscale or not, signs of disorder on the outside like trash, general disorder, folks loitering and whatnot, whether or not there were burglar bars on the building, whether or not there was sufficient lighting in the parking lot, whether or not there were outdoor closed circuit cameras, and whether or not it was a standalone or non-standalone strip or mall location. We also collected data at each location on food availability and pricing, whether or not they had fresh produce, fresh dairy, fresh meat, frozen meat, and fresh bread, and then also pricing analyses of a list of the most commonly purchased nationwide common household goods. Those included milk, Coca-Cola, trash bags, laundry detergent, and cereal. In terms of our study findings, I'm going to, the report goes into much more detail. I'm going to hit the highlights here. First, the statutory analysis, this table presents the breakdown of local policies limiting small box discount retailers nationwide as of May of 2020. You can see here are the 26 different jurisdictions that were engaged in zoning action, the date of the, where the, the action was finalized, whether or not there was a moratorium involved, whether or not they imposed density limits, design limits, special land use permit limits, overlays, health focus, and whether or not their actions were focused on health issues, crime issues, or economic issues, or retail diversity. In terms of the safety and security features from our qualitative analysis, we found that small box discount retailers generally compare favorably to local and large grocery stores as well as retail pharmacies on their environmental, environmental, or compare unfavorably, that is relative to the grocery stores and pharmacies on factors commonly associated with crime. So that's the clear sightlines, the cameras, the social disorder, those kinds of things. And also, they exhibited similar safety and security feature characteristics as convenience stores. In terms of the other issues, in particular, they were more likely to have lean staffing models with a lone cashier compared to grocery stores. They were more likely to have pervasive signs of parking lot disorder compared to grocery stores, and they were more likely to have pervasive signs of interior disorder and clutter compared to pharmacies and grocery stores. On the other side, they were less likely to have clear external, external, I'm sorry, exterior and interior sightlines compared to grocery stores and pharmacies, and less likely to have upscale exterior storefronts compared to grocery stores and pharmacies. And these are just a few photographs that we took from in the different stores that show, in particular, the clutter in the, in the aisles and the sightlines, compromised sightlines that make it difficult for the employees to observe activity from their register vantage points. In terms of the food availability and pricing, small box discount retailers were less likely to have fresh produce, fresh lunch meat, and frozen meat available when compared to local and large grocery stores. They were more likely to have some fresh lunch meat and frozen meat available relative to pharmacies. In total, the small box discount retailers appeared to provide cost savings on common household items when compared to large grocery stores and pharmacies, but do not compare favorably to large grocery stores when it comes to pricing. I'll shift over to Dr. Daigle now for the crime analysis.
Thanks, Dr. Dabney. As part of our quantitative analysis, we also examined the relationship between small box discount retailers and crime. And we did this analysis in a number of ways. The first thing we did is that we took the crime data that we received from DeKalb County Police Department and determined the number of crimes that occurred at or within 100 feet from small box discount retailers to just provide a descriptive picture of the amount of crime that is occurring at and close to these locations. The second thing that we did was we generated some heat maps so we could visually compare the location of small box discount retailers and where crime is occurring. And we also did this for other types of stores. The third thing we did is that we examined how the number of small box discount retailers related to crime counts in census tracts. We examined this by taking an overall crime measure, examining personal crime, property crime, and public order crimes. In this particular analysis, we examined the number of small box discount retailers in a census tract for a given year and looked at its relationship to crime in the subsequent year. The next thing that we did is we looked at both census tracts and census block groups and identified those areas that had more than one small box discount retailer to see whether or not the presence of having more than one of these stores is related to an increase in crime in those tracks or block groups. Finally, we examined the number of small box discount retailers from 2017 to see if they were more in 2017 than in 2015, to see if that, when census tracts had a greater number of small box discount retailers, if that was related to an increase in crime counts in 2018 and 2019. Next slide. So as you can see here, this table just shows the number of crimes that actually occurred at or within the 100-feet buffer from small box discount retailers, and this is aggregated from 2015 to 2019. There was over 2,600 crimes that occurred around these locations. As you can see, the most common type of crime is larceny, which is theft. And so that means that property crimes were the most prevalent, followed by public order Next slide. As I mentioned, the second type of analysis that we did was to generate heat maps. Heat maps are a way to depict where concentrations of elements are occurring. As you can see in this particular map on the left, the red spots are where crime is high, the blue spots are where crime is the lowest across unincorporated DeKalb. The dots on the map on the left are the locations of the small box discount retailers. You can see that there does appear to be a relationship between the location of these stores and where crime is most dense in unincorporated DeKalb. On the right-hand side, you see another heat map. Again, this is demonstrating crime across unincorporated DeKalb. Same way to look at this, the red areas are where crime is the most dense, the blue areas are the least dense for crime, and then the other store types are plotted on, on this map. It might be difficult to see, but the darker dots are convenience stores, the red dots are pharmacies, and then the green dots are grocery stores. As you can see, convenience stores appear to be more prevalent in those high-crime areas than do, say, grocery stores. So the next thing that we did was to look at census tracts and to see if the number of small box discount retailers in those tracts was actually related to the number of crimes, again, looking at different types of crimes. And we did this from a year-to-year analysis. We did find that there is a relationship between the number of small box discount retailers and higher counts of violent property, public order, and total crime. What this means then is that the number of, as the number of small box discount retailer stores increases in census tract, there, the number of crimes in those areas was also These analyses, we did account for other presence of stores, so the convenience stores, grocery stores, and pharmacies, and also accounted for other measures that are related to crime, such as poverty, percent black, and population. When we incorporated these other factors into our analyses, those relationships between the number of small box discount retailers and crime become less pronounced. We did some more subsequent analyses, and it seems that the relationship between the number of stores and crime for small box discount retailers appears to mimic the relationship more closely with convenience stores than it does with grocery stores or our pharmacies that we studied. The next type of analysis that we did is that we looked at what we call clustering of multiple small box discount retailers within both census block groups and then also within census tracts. We determined whether or not a census block group had more than one small box discount retailer and used that measure to see if it was related to higher crime. And we did find that those block groups with multiple small box discount retailers had higher property crime counts than areas that didn't have more than one. We also found this similar relationship when we did the clustering analysis for our convenience store. So in those same block groups where they have more than one convenience store, there also appears to be an increase in the number of crimes in those areas. We also did this analysis looking at census tract, which is a larger unit of analysis. And we found that census tracts that have multiple small box discount retailers had higher counts of public order and personal crimes. And that when we looked at census tracts that had both more than one small box discount retailer and more than one convenience store, we found that there was a relationship there too with having a higher number of public order and personal or violent crimes. The last type of crime analysis that we did is we looked at areas where they had more stores in 2017 than they did in 2015 of small box discount retailers. And we found that census tracts that had a growth in the number of stores across that time frame also saw higher numbers of crimes in subsequent years of 2018 and 2019 when we combined those years together. And when we looked at this in that, in that context of using our other variables, we found that the relationship was no longer significant, but still large. And this is likely due to not having that many census tracts that had more than one small box discount retailer located within them. The next set of analyses that we looked at was the relationship between presence of small box discount retailers and food insecurity. And then we also looked at median home values. We did find that small box discount retailers tend to be located in or adjacent to census tracts where there is high levels of food insecurity. And we also found that small box discount retailers do tend to be located in areas that are considered to be food deserts. However, when we looked at the presence of the number of small box discount retailers on food insecurity by using the social vulnerability index, we did not find a significant relationship. Again, we provided some maps to visually display the location of small box discount retailers.
If I could interrupt just one second, I just want to confirm a time check with staff. I know this presentation is in depth, just want to confirm how much time we have spoken already. Can staff answer that question for us?
The time for this presentation in particular has been 19 minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Mr. Baker? I just want to confirm, this is only a presentation for tonight? Is that ultimately the, the goal that we have here?
I think there is a staff recommendation that goes along with the presentation.
Okay, all right. And do we have an idea of how much longer we're going to be discussing this?
Less than five minutes.
There's three more slides.
Three more slides, okay. Good enough, thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No worries.
Yeah, so as I was saying, the left-hand side of this picture shows you the location of small box discount retailers and, and where food deserts lie. Food deserts on this map are the green areas. And then you'll look to the right, and that is the location of pharmacies as compared to small box discount retailers. You'll notice that small box discount retailers just visually are more likely to be within or near, adjacent to food deserts than are the pharmacies that we studied. And lastly, we looked at property values. We examined the location or the presence, excuse me, of the number of small box discount retailers and median home values. There does appear to be a negative relationship between the presence of small box discount retailers and median home values at the census block level. The relationship varied from year to year. Often, it was not statistically significant. We found a different finding for the presence of pharmacies where it actually was associated with higher median home values. Again, relationship varied from year to year and oftentimes wasn't significant. Same again for the relationship between grocery stores and median home values where they appear to have a positive relationship with home values. And last but not least, this is a heat map of the, the home values with where small box discount retailers are located on the left, and then on the right is where the location of other stores. So you'll notice that home values that are lower tend to be where the small box discount retailers are located, whereas where you see higher home values, you see a larger presence of our other stores.
All right, thank you, Dr. Daigle. And so very quickly, in conclusion, our findings suggest that small box discount retailers are less likely to have fresh food than the other retailers that we looked at. They are less likely to have safety and security features that are tied to effective crime prevention. They are less likely to have upscale appearance and also more likely to have greater signs of social disorder. The number and clustering of small box discount retailers are linked to increased crime counts at the census tract level in a way similar they are with convenience stores, and they're also often located nearer adjacent to food desert census tracts, and they're related to lower median housing values. Questions, comments?
All right, thank you, doctors, both of you very much. Commissioners, are there any questions that you might have? I don't see any right now, so what I'll do is I'll go back to Mr. Baker. And Mr. Baker?
So at this time, I'd just like for Mr. White to just give the staff recommendation.
Okay. Okay, and so just as an update, excuse me, you all provided the latest draft of the small box text amendment earlier this morning, but we still need some time to finalize the language and there's also some consultation and coordination with some of the stakeholders in the industry regarding the proposed regulations. So staff is recommending a full cycle deferral.
At this time-
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Davis Johnson.
And make a motion first.
Oh. Well, I wanted to make sure, I think we might need to have an opportunity for public comment first, so I wanted to open the floor up for that, but commissioners first and then some public comments. So Commissioner Davis Johnson, please go ahead, please go ahead.
Yeah, so I do appreciate the study, and I can appreciate the findings. And, and, and what I would say, just off the top of my head, is that, yeah, I mean, I'm for the deferral and to see what comes out of the recommendations from the planning department. I think that we have to recognize the fact that there are food deserts, and there are people that do not have transportation to get to the grocery stores and get to the pharmacies. And I think that, you know, we have to understand that, and we have to put that with, with the finding of this study, you know? And so, you know, I just wanted to say that because I would like to see some type of balance, which I would think that would require, you know, some regulations on small box stores, as well as limit the number of stores in any particular area. So I just wanted to say that, that there is a need for them. And it has to be, I think- It had to be. We have to consider the effect that it has on the community. But like I say, some people do not have transportation to get to the grocery stores and the pharmacy, so that's all that I have to say.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson, next I see the hand of Commissioner Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, yes, thank you, Dr. Dabney and Dr. Bagel. Appreciate, I think we, I feel like I've seen this presentation twice now, so I'm definitely like even more, you know. You know, it's good deep, good data, good details, good to have it out there as much as possible. I wanted to really kind of agree and sort of second the emotion of Commissioner Davis Johnson. About how I think, you know, whether it's transportation, mobility issues to, you know, vital, you know, commodities. Whether it's fresh food or just food in general, or other, you know, items that are really important and hard to get, especially. Understanding that, you know, some of these institutions and businesses are really at can be disrupted by heavy inflationary pressures. That, you know, as as now we're currently in. I I wanted to ask, maybe it was for the law department or planning, were we going to? I'd submitted a few comments, you know, about a month ago or so, and I wasn't sure if we were going to have. Like one on one meetings to address some of the maybe particulars, I mean, I was most interested in. Really kind of focusing on in any incentives for any small box discount retailers to have, you know. A fresh, more fresh food options and was interested in looking at a way to sort of balance out. What maybe are some in the industry are saying isn't possible with what we want to see in the community. And then the other piece was around the surveillance systems. And just like we are, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson is leading on increasing our security and, you know, video surveillance at, you know, gas stations and convenience stores. I feel that that same mindset and that same strategy should really apply to these as well. Especially since I think you're really pointing out that there is a correlation. And and there's data that is showing that connection between crime and these locations. And then, you know, I think our job is to help address those in a, you know, a thoughtful thoughtful way. So I guess the main, the main question is, are we going to have an opportunity to? You know, speak in a little bit more detail on some of these finer points before we kind of come back for, you know, a final action. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, did you want to address that?
I was just simply going to say that the draft version that you guys have does make some references to some of the suggestions that the commissioners have made. We actually have also submitted that draft to some of the industry representatives. And I think that their comments, Presiding Officer, once you open it up for the public comment. I think some of the representatives are here and can talk to you about the percentages of for fresh food and produce and so forth during that time. And by doing the full cycle deferral, it gives us an opportunity to meet with those representatives, but also to meet with you prior to it coming back to you before July the 31st.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baker. Commissioner Terry, is that good enough for now?
That's great, thank you so much.
Okay, next I'd like to recognize Commissioner Cochrane Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Baker started to touch on some of the points, but, you know, understanding too that tonight brevity is probably important. But within the document, it does clearly lay out the current recommendations to help diminish the proliferation. And I do believe, Mr. Baker, if I read properly currently. We would institute a one mile distance requirement from one location to another. So I want to urge everyone to really read it really carefully. Because some of the questions that I'm hearing, it's it's certainly there. And to Commissioner Terry also, because with the video surveillance legislation that's presented. We define a high risk business as one that has had a certain type of crime that has occurred there. It would be an automatic trigger to require the lighting packages as well as the video surveillance. Because I I believe they did a really good job here tonight of laying out the fact that this is a conversation we've had. Unfortunately, our small box stores or dollar stores, if we want to be specific. We've seen higher incidents of crime there than in any other form of retail business. So I will be quiet because I think we do need to honestly read through this carefully, bring it back to committee. Because we keep bringing this before the B O C and here in zoning. But I think we need to have an in-depth conversation in committee. And thank you for allowing me to make those statements.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, thank you for your comments. Mr. Metals or Commissioners, any other hands raised, I don't see any right now. Seeing none, Mr. Metowski, if you would, open the floor to anyone wishing to speak in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and yes, if you'd like to speak in support, please reuse the raise hand feature or pound two. Our first request is Alexander Brock, go ahead and ask him to unmute, video already showing, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Presiding Officer and Commissioners, my name is Alex Brock. Office address is 1105 West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. And I am here on behalf of Dollar General, a stakeholder in the industry directly impacted by this ordinance. And I'm here tonight to request a deferral of this item. We've been in conversations with county staff for over a year on this issue in anticipation of draft of the ordinance. And it's always been our understanding that once a draft was ready, we would have the opportunity to review and sit down with cap officials. To discuss our questions and concerns, we've been patiently waiting on that draft and we just recently received it about two and a half weeks ago. We've during that time, we've been reviewing posed ordinance and we're anticipating the opportunity to meet with the county planning staff. Within the next two weeks or so to voice our concerns. We've been waiting for this opportunity to give our input into development of this ordinance and we asked for this body to defer its decision so that can happen. Staff has recommended a full cycle deferral to July, knowing that not all conversations with relevant stakeholders such as us have yet occurred. The the planning commission has understood the need for these conversations and recommended deferral as well. I ask that you follow the plan commissions lead and the staff's recommendation and vote for full cycle deferral. We fully anticipate that both us and the planning staff will be ready to move forward in July, once we have those conversations. And thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brock, Mr. Metowski.
Yes, we have another request, Stephen Benny, I will ask Mr. Benny to unmute if he'd like to share his video, he may, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephen Benny, I live at 1083 Saville Drive, Clarkston, Georgia, 30021. I believe that perhaps the family dollar. The lower income areas of the county. And the lower income areas of the county are probably those areas that have a little bit higher crime level. So I'm not sure which causes which. But I do want to suggest that this ordinance should perhaps have a. Number of minimum employees at a family dollar or a Dollar General store should have on hand, three, four, five. But I think you need at minimum somebody to run the cash register, someone to be around the aisles and perhaps one someone stocking stocking. I also with the food desert. I think that you that the commission and zoning people need to think outside the box. Bring the grocery stores to the neighborhood, offer tax breaks. Perhaps you could even offer to pay the salaries of DeKalb County Police. That would be at the stores in order to keep them safer. These kind of things will bring the food to the citizens, you're not trying to get the citizens to the food. You are trying to bring the food from the stores to the citizens. And just consider that, thank you very much for your time.
Right, thank you, Mr. Benny. Mr. Metowski, are there any other hands, I see Commissioner Johnson, we'll get to him if there's no one else.
At this time, there are no additional hands raised, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes, for Mr. Brock.
Mr. Brock, are you still there?
We'll get him back on one moment. Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Mr. Brock just got wrong request because it's hard to catch you. Can you cut the grass over aggression, bro, your family dollars is like the Serengeti. Grass is really high.
So it's the family dollar or Dollar General?
One of the stores over there, but we'll talk after this.
We'll make sure if there's any maintenance done or that needs to be done, that'll get done.
Thank you.
All right, thank you both. Let's see here, if I could ask Mr. White, I guess, or Mr. Baker?
Commissioner, I don't believe we did the opposition yet, if I recall correctly.
Okay, please go ahead.
So if you would like to speak in opposition to this particular item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you're on a phone. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
Okay, all right, if I could, I'd like to ask staff to reiterate what their request is for today.
A full cycle deferral of the text amendment.
Okay, and again, this is something that affects all commission districts. And I'd open the floor for a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion, we defer it full cycle, like Commissioner Cochrane Johnson says, bring it back to PECs. So we have a full discussion before you bring it back to the the regular board.
And I second that.
All right, got a proper motion and second, thank you very much. Commissioners, any other comments, Commissioner Rader?
Yes, I will support the full cycle deferral, but I would like to see if we couldn't go through a process to make this the last deferral. This thing has been, you know, the moratorium has been in place for over two years now. And now I hear the industry being engaged, I think that it would be great perhaps if Commissioner Johnson. Could schedule a time for review by the committee when. The staff can report back on their conversations with the industry so that when we look at a markup. It will be informed by all of those stakeholders. And that ideally, the committee can make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for what is likely to be a substitute from what we have today. But I do think that it is important not only to our. You know, stakeholders, but also the communities in which these businesses are located to get. Our regulatory improvements in place that we reconcile the requirements in this ordinance with the requirements associated with the. You know, the nuisance businesses that Commissioner. Cochrane Johnson is working on to make sure that they're kind of the same video surveillance requirements. I personally like the idea of minimum staffing, but I'm not going to, you know, hang my hat on it, but I do think minimum staffing is. Is a good way to deal with it, perhaps on staff members per square foot, because it's pretty easy to tell how many people are working there. And you could put the number of staff required on the business license based upon the square footage of the business. And then we need to decide where we're going to come down on the range of products that are offered for sale. So that we can integrate that issue into it. So I think that there is, you know, as Commissioner Davis Johnson said, you know, these are a. A viable business that seem to serve a segment of the community and certainly proximity is key to many populations. So we don't want to discount the importance of stores that are within communities. But they also need to be safe, well maintained and offer a range of products that serve the community, not only from an economic perspective. But also from what they need in order to thrive as a as a place to live and to raise a family. So I'm looking forward to this being the last deferral and to be able to work on a substitute in PECs. So that we can make that recommendation at our July. Planning meeting at night at a public hearing.
Right, thank you very much, Commissioner Rader. Commissioner Ted Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, I agree with the sentiment about not deferring it any longer. However, I do want to just recognize that we had a public hearing tonight and two people said something. And so I just think that we need to just sort of decide that if this is the, if this is it, we're going to have two months, we're going to do this, we need to do it. And don't wait to the last minute to have the public hearing, like let's have a something like a public hearing. A month from now or sooner or later, but not just one and done. Because I just, I think a lot of people are really interested in this, but you know, they don't want to come to the zoning meeting in, you know, for 24 cases, right? So even if we could just do like a special call meeting or just something like a one off just on this thing right here. Because this is some really good information that I think a lot of people would love to see. And I'm assuming that the media is going to write about this, but I don't, I don't know if they are. They seem to kind of just sort of cursorly, you know, describe it, so I think even just a newspaper article doesn't really explain the breadth of what we're trying to do here. And so I just think at the very least, we should just have that opportunity for a little bit bigger meeting that's really just about this one thing. And so I'm not sure if that's something that's, if that's a committee thing or if that's just like a planning department thing. But and then just in that context, I think we need to invite the industry representatives. I think they they absolutely need to publicly put their position out there. I don't want us to all just have meetings behind closed doors and it all gets done, you know, in the planning department somewhere. Because the planning department is taking the lead on it, but we have to vote on it. And so, you know, there's conversations need to be had. I think we have the responsibility to make sure that public debate and the pros and cons. Are given sort of the full, the full breadth of their attention. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Terry, I see the hands of Commissioner Cochrane Johnson as well as Commissioner Rita Davis Johnson, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, if you go first, please.
Thank you, and and I'll be brief, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Rader. I appreciate Commissioner Larry Johnson for saying he will take this into PECs so that we can have, give it the due diligence that it needs. In the proper environment with the proper conversation and discussions. And I do want to say, you know, the, a lot of, a lot of states are even watching. What we're doing here at this moment as it relates to this legislation and to Mr. Brock. I know everyone here has an interest, your interest, of course, is the entity that you represent. Our in our interest lies with the people. So, you know, I look forward to everyone having access to information and conversation. But at the end of the day, I look forward to us doing what is best based upon the data and the needs of the community. Because I thank Commissioner Larry Johnson for pointing out, you know, I don't want to turn it into a free for all. Not, you know, in many instances, there's a lot left to be desired for the upkeep. Which in some instances, I believe lends to the outcome that is associated with the crime. So I look forward to you being there, Mr. Brock, for the conversation and thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner Cochrane Johnson, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Yes, thank you, I'd just like to say that, yeah, I think it's incumbent upon us. As well as the advertisement that is that goes out on these meetings to inform our constituents. As to when the citizens of the cab as to this discussion that is being made. I sent it out to my people in the fifth. And I will continue to do so, but I think it'd be premature to have a meeting prior to a discussion in PECs. Where we have, where we have pretty much gone through issues or worked through issues. And, you know, make a recommendation, but I will say that. You know, it's incumbent upon us to inform our constituents as to. This issue because it's very important to hope that we can get them. And I think that people will come if if they're informed of what we're doing. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to inform the people and then let them know. When there's going to be another public meeting on this, but I think it's premature to have a meeting. Probably because this has been going on for a long time and we've gotten input, I know I've gotten input from from the community. So it's 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 not that the community has had no input, we're at the end now. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to that our constituents know. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to, that our constituents know, and to try to encourage them. To participate in this end process.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Davis Johnson, Commissioner Larry Johnson, I noticed your hand was up and it's down, do you have any comments or?
Yeah, just to say, anything you do in the summer, because this is a full cycle deferral, it comes back in July, summertime is the worst time. To have a lot of meetings, folks are on vacation, and what we're dealing with, the pandemic, folks have checked out. So I didn't want, if you do it, you have to do it in the fall, and I know you ought to want to defer when people start really getting more engaged, so we'll talk about that more at the committee level. Because the summertime, your attendance go down much, a lot of these type of meetings already, and people just zoomed out. So we'll talk about it more, but thank you. And we, I'm prepared, we're prepared for the discussion with the industry, as well as the commissioners at the PECs committee.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Johnson. Seeing no other hands raised, commissioners, we have a motion to do a full cycle deferral. And I'll go ahead and move into the roll call, Commissioner Rader. Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that deferral, seven zero in the affirmative, all right. Give me one second, here we go, my next agenda item, we're on. Deferral item number three, which is twenty twenty two eleven eighty two. At this point, since this item directly affects District One, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to my colleague, Commissioner Rita Davis Johnson. Who will guide us through this next step.
Okay. Okay, this is D three. And Commission District. One and seven. And this is an application of the Director of Planning and Sustainability for a tax amendment. To the zoning ordinance, to the regulations, to the regulations of the North Lake, Overlake District. Tier two, to increase the allowed residential density. From thirty units per acre to sixty. Units per acre. And so with that. The planning permission. I mean, the planning department has presentation.
Yes, ma'am, got it. Okay, you all can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
All right, all right, so before you, this map represents the remaining parcels of. The North Lake, Overlake District. Three tiers in the North Lake, Overlake District. The teal color represents tier one, the purple tier two, and we also have a mixed use tier. Here. So we had, last fall, we received a buy right proposal. For a mixed use development of the site that's currently occupied, vacant. Property, it used to be the Kroger headquarters here, our Parkway Drive, adjacent to two eighty five. Ran into a discrepancy with the proposal related to its proposed density. And so. Considering the the economic development benefit that this project would bring to the county, to that area. We consulted with the applicant and the development team, and the applicable commissioners. On a plan to accommodate that particular proposal. And so that the byproduct of those discussions is the text amendment that's before you today. So just for a little background, within that area. There are two, three existing apartment complexes presently. The immigration building here, it's the subject property. Doubletree Hotel, Bank of America, some other commercial uses. And on the other side, on the eastern side of two eighty five. Is a new apartment complex in the city of Tucker. So the proposed mixed use development will include multifamily units. In addition to some ground level, retail, live work units. And so we feel the use is compatible with existing uses in the vicinity, and it worth your consideration. Also of note, the subject property, as well as the overlay district. Is included in our regional center, character area in the comprehensive plan. It's our most intense and most dense character area in the comprehensive plan. And so it, the preference for the land use guidelines in that area. Is obviously mixed use development, greater densities, greater heights on those buildings. And trying to get a mixture of uses in this area, which. This proposal checks a number of those boxes, but as I mentioned, the proposal is a buy right use. Other than making some adjustments to the zoning ordinance to accommodate the project. So that's what we did. The applicant and development team, since March, have gone out, they've met with members of the community. Stakeholders in that area to show them the project. And explain the development proposal in great detail. And it is our understanding that everyone is generally satisfied with the proposal. And so this is the text amendment proposal to increase. The density for tier two. Only in this area, bounded by this blue line here, north, south of North Lake Parkway. North of La Vista, along Parkway Drive, to limit up to sixty dwelling units per acre. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the request.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments by the? Commissioners, comments or questions about the commissioners before I go to the public?
The applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Now we will hear from the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson, members of the board, I'm Kathy Zickert with Smith-Gimbrell and Russell, and it is my client, Greg Co-Development, which is. Sort of the underlying reason that we're doing this text amendment. We have been working very hard with the county and with the community for the past several months, as well as specifically with Commissioners Patrick. Cochran Johnson and Terry, all of whom had a whole lot of input, which was very, very helpful, and I think. Enabled us to derive an ultimate M proposal, which is considerably superior to where we started out. You all have a ton of stuff ahead of you this evening, and I suspect with justice name that I keep this as short as possible. There was no opposition at Community Council or Planning Commission. So I would ask you to accept the staff recommendation and. Reserve whatever remaining time I might need for rebuttal if there is opposition here this evening, but I thank all three commissioners, you all have been. Delightful to work with and very, very helpful.
And thank you, Attorney Zickert. So right now, are there any questions, comments from commissioners? Okay, if not, we will go to the public. Are there any comments and? Support of this?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and at this time, if you'd like to speak in support of this item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on iPhone. And at this time, there are no hands raised.
Are there any comments and opposition?
And for opposition, same thing, pound two, or use the raise hand feature, please. And none at this time.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item twenty twenty two dash eleven eighty two.
Second.
And I also have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you very much to the residents that were involved. As well as Matthew Lee with the Tucker North Lake CID. It is important always to have good input from our residents, and there were some concerns that were raised initially with what was discussed. I also want to give a shout out and a compliment to Kathy Zickert and her team. They met with the community as a standalone meeting to explain exactly the details. And the rationale behind the request that was being made for this text amendment. And speaking with those residents that attended that meeting, they were very supportive, once they understood. The rationale behind why we're doing what we're doing. So with that, those are my comments, again, I just want to say thank you to the residents for speaking out. And as well as to Ms. Zickert and her team for being willing to engage with our community to help alleviate any concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, are there any other comments from commissioners? And I don't see all of them, so if you could help me, John, is?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you, so at this time, we'll take a vote. Okay. District number one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. District two.
Aye.
District three.
Yes.
District four.
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize, yes.
That's okay, District six.
Yes.
And District seven.
Aye.
And I vote aye, District five, okay, thank you, and I turn it back to our Presiding Officer now.
Thank you, Madam Deputy, I appreciate you handling that one for us. All right, Commissioners, we're gonna move on to D four, Agenda Item twenty twenty two eleven seventy eight. This is for Commission Districts four and Super District seven, application of. Sorry about that. Application of Zondria Ranch to request a special land use permit, a SLAP. To allow a four thousand five hundred square foot lounge, Globar ATL. Within the Stone Bridge Village Shopping Center to operate beyond twelve thirty AM. As a late night establishment within the C one local commercial district at eight zero zero two Rock Bridge Road. And I believe, is it Mr. White, that'll be making a presentation for us?
It's me.
Oh, I'm sorry, my screen fell down here, but go ahead, please.
No problem, I'm sure, I, me sharing my screen might have messed you up too, so apologies if it did. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public, this item is D four, and it is a SLAP application to continue to allow. The operation of a four thousand five hundred square foot lounge, Globar ATL. This approval will allow the lounge to operate beyond twelve thirty AM as a late night establishment. They have previously received a SLAP, and at one condition of that previously approved SLAP was that they come back again. The SLAP proposal, yes, it is within a C one zoning district. Here, you can see the land use map, it is within a neighborhood center. The late night establishment is surrounded by established retail, personal services, and office uses within the Stone Bridge Village Shopping Center. There are no anticipated adverse impacts on surrounding properties, since the site is with an established commercial shopping area. Has access to a major thoroughfare, Rock Bridge Road to the south, and has ample parking. The Rock Bridge Road separates the single family residential uses to the south from the prop, from the, from the late night establishment. Here, you can see the site photos. The continued use as a late night establishment appears to be compatible with adjacent properties. And will not create adverse impacts upon adjoining land uses by reasons of hours of operation, noise, odor, or vibration. However, there were. There were no attendees in opposition at the Community Council meeting. This application was deferred by the Board of Commissioners last cycle to allow more time for the community input. During this current cycle, the Community Council recommended approval of the application. And the applicant has met all their signposting deadlines. The staff recommends approval with three conditions, including two security officers must be present. During. After twelve thirty AM until after closing, and that the applicant will ensure that the facility in operation are in compliance with all. Applicable counties and state regulations, including the completion of a new letter of entertainment form. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bragg, appreciate the staff report, next I'd like to hear from Zondry as the applicant.
Hey, everybody, I'm Andrea. I, I'm in agreement with all of the conditions that we received. And, yeah, she pretty much said everything up, here for any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mutowski, at this point, let's go ahead and open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, if you would like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise, raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. At this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and open the floor to anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition, raise hand feature or pound two, we have one request. Dr. Lei, I'll just say that first name, I'll ask you to unmute, please start your video if you would like to, and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dr. Tamara Lee Terry. I am in favor of the Globar being able to operate in excess of hours after twelve thirty. They are a well-defined establishment that cater to the community, birthday parties. And events that specialize for whatever a person is trying to do. Our establishment as a university are going to be celebrating affiliate doctors. Who have gotten their doctorate degrees, master degrees, and alumni is a very classy place, there has never been incidents. And we would not be supporting them if we felt that there was, was, had ever been any incident. Or had the potential for our event to be put at risk. She has been a beacon in the community, being so young, being so ambitious. And set apart from other people who may have. Establishments that have a negative connotation attached to it, versus has a positive vibe. And we commend her for her input in wanting to be a woman of color and an entrepreneur. And someone who's so young, who has contributed to the community and our community, as well as her own. Being who she has become over the years, and being so young at thirty two years old to have accomplished so much. With opposition, but has always come out on top, we are very much in support of what she is doing, we will continue to support her. And I hope that the community will get behind those who are ambitious enough to. Believe in themselves enough to establish their own businesses, and the fact that they choose. To do it in DeKalb County and offer jobs for people who wouldn't normally have jobs, is just another. Way to empower people to be independent. Post pandemic, getting back on their feet, and being a supplier of those jobs for people that need them. So I definitely withstand an agreement, and I hope that the committee will as well. To support people who are ambitious enough to want to better themselves, thank you for letting me speak.
And thank you for your comment, that one was clearly in favor, we were on the opposition, but that's definitely okay, we do have another request for comment. It's from Kay, I will ask Kay to unmute, if they'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record. And I am sending you on.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
I'm having some technical difficulties, I'm hi, my name is Kay, and I frequent the Globar. I, however, I reside in Gwinnett County, but I'm only thirteen minutes, I'm kind of like on the Snellville border. So I'm only thirteen minutes, it's like my closest bar, and I go there quite often. And I was here at the last meeting, and I stated that I work second shift, so by the time I make it back. And I want to unwind and kind of have adult time, it's usually eleven, eleven thirty. So when I get there, I really, you know, it closes at twelve or twelve thirty, I never really get to completely unwind anymore. Unless it's a day off, I've been going since they've opened, and I've never saw any incidents. I've never heard any arguments, it's always clean, it's always nice, the staff is very friendly. And like I said, I've been going since it's open, and if it could stay open a little later for us. Second shift people in the world, it wouldn't mean a lot, or I was just gonna say in DeKalb. Or the, you know, Gwinnett and DeKalb, because we, we, we want to, you know, have adult time too, we all have children. We're approaching summer break, and it is a really great place, it's a well-lit location, there, you know, there's a waffle house in the parking lot. That's twenty four hours, so there's usually always people there, and it's just a really nice place, I am definitely. I am definitely for it staying open late.
And thank you for your comment, Kay, could you, uh, I'm sorry, I, we didn't hear your full name and address, please.
Hey, Perry, and then my address is one zero nine five, Four Sister Place.
Thank you so much, and again, thank you for your comment. Uh, we'll do one last call, if anyone is in opposition to this, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two. And at this time, Mr. Presiding Officer, there are no hands raised.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, we'll make an opportunity for the applicant, Zondria, to, uh, make a rebuttal, or any additional comments that she may have.
And I am sending her an invite, here she comes. Oh, you're still unmuted. There you go.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, um, I don't have any, um, thing else to say, but thank you for all the positive feedback, um, from both speakers, thank you so much.
Okay, uh, at this point, Ms. Bragg, if you wouldn't mind, please reiterate the staff recommendation.
That is approval with conditions, and those are substitute conditions, please.
Substitute conditions, okay. All right, uh, at this point, let me, um, remind everyone that this is Agenda Item twenty twenty-two eleven seventy-eight, and this affects Commission Districts four and Super District seven, and at this point, I will hear a motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. At this point, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the substitute conditions for the purpose of discussion, and I have a question for staff, if I can get a second, please.
Um, I will second with a comment.
Uh, okay, we have proper motion and second, go ahead, Commissioner Cochran Johnson with your question.
Um, yes, uh, I do commend, uh, Zondria, and I appreciate the kind words. I do like to see, um, young ambitious people. Um, one question though that I have, um, I have no, I take no issue with, um, extend, the extension of hours, but if you visit the website, it does show that you are also a hookah lounge, which does require uh, a different licensing, additional licensing. And, um, there are videos of entertainment, so I want to caution you because I want you to be decent and in order. And if you need additional licensing, I would implore you to receive it. Because if there is a determination that there's anything out of order, it would have consequences, and I don't want to see that for you, okay? Um, so be, be very.
We have a, we have a, a license. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. We have a license to sell hookah.
Okay, um, with that statement, I would, um, ask Mr. Baker for confirmation. And/or staff.
Yes.
Uh, go ahead, gentlemen.
Brandon, do you know the answer to that question?
We'll have to look directly into, uh, the hookah aspect of, uh, their licensing right now. Uh, but otherwise, they have an existing SLUP, and they do have an existing business license, uh, to operate a late night establishment.
Thank you, just wanna be sure she's clear, that we're clear, um, so that there's no problems in the future, but otherwise, my second still stands.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Commissioner Bradshaw, I owe you a bit of an apology, I sort of broke a protocol, but I let the general go first, so I apologize about that.
Not, no problem whatsoever, so, uh, my question to staff is simply this, and as we were going through the deliberations over this, there was an issue with regard to the signage and proper notification attendant to the signage, I just wanna make sure all of those issues have been addressed and we're, we're coloring within the line, so if somebody from the planning staff can confirm that for me.
They have.
Yes, sir, to our knowledge, yes, there, uh, we sent out, uh, legal advertisements and notifications to uh, residents within two hundred and fifty feet. And the applicant posted public hearing signs, uh, by the allotted dates on, uh, on the zoning cycle calendar. Everything appears to be okay.
Okay, thank you, then my motion stands.
Right, perfect. Uh, Commissioners, I see no other hands raised, so, uh, what we'll do is we'll move into the, uh, into the roll call. Uh, Commissioner Rader.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye on that one as well, that is a motion to approve with the substitute language seven zero in the affirmative. And with that, we'll move on to, uh, D five, which is Agenda Item twenty twenty-two eleven seventy-six, Commission Districts two and Super District six, application of Amy Swink, uh, Enhanced Construction Company LLC for land use plan amendment for properties at fourteen ninety-three and fifteen oh one La Vista Road from, uh, sub, suburban to NC, that's Neighborhood Center. Uh, who will be presenting this one? Ms. Bragg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
And, um, I would suggest that we take D five and N one together, um, because they are, um, companion applications.
Just set them on the same, I got it.
Okay.
I just wanna double check with my, uh, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Rader, Commissioner Terry, is that?
That's fine with me.
That's fine with you, okay. Ms. Bragg, please move ahead.
Great, um, so as stated, D five, um, is a request for a land use plan amendment to amend from suburban to neighborhood center. Um, and N one is to rezone the properties from O I to M R two. Um, and the purpose is to, um, construct a proposed townhome community. So, um, the intent, you can see here, um, the, the request is to rezone from suburban to neighborhood center. Um, the intent of the neighborhood center character area is to identify areas that conserve the local neighborhood's needs for goods and services. These areas shall complement the character of the neighborhoods, and the location of commercial areas shall reduce automobile travel, promote walkability, and increase transit usage. Residential developments shall reinforce the center by locating higher density options adjacent to the center. And the land map amendment application to the subject parcel from suburban to neighborhood center is consistent with the character area and activity center policies, um, included in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, the staff's recommendation, um, is approval. Um, if we zoom out a little bit, you can see, um, here's the neighborhood center, and these parcels are, um, on the outer ring of that neighborhood center. The Neighborhood Center Outer Ring Policies and Development Guidelines call for a mix of residential retail office and service uses at a maximum density of twenty-four units per acre, building heights between one and three stories, and, um, enhanced buffers to allow an appropriate transition into the abutting and nearby low-density, single-family residential area. This plan appears to be consistent with the Neighborhood Center Outer Ring Policies relating to building height. Three-story, um, units are provided, and land use, as, um, the proposed land use would be single-family attached residential, as well as the density, um, fifteen point three eight units per acre will be provided. Um, the M R one zoning purpose is in part to encourage residential plan developments that allow accessory uses, um, to provide for residential neighborhoods with a mix of single-family and multifamily housing type um, that continue to maintain a harmony of scale and intensity, um, blending with the surrounding development. Um, this property is surrounded by a mixture, um, and provides a transition from multiple housing, multi-family housing, um, located here to single-family housing located, um, around the parcels. Here, you can see again where we are, um, talking about transitioning from the O I, um, to the M R one. Again, this is the zoning map, um, here you can see um, the aerial showing the proposed location, uh, next to this, um, multifamily and nearby single-family detached residences. I believe the site plan has been tweaked, but I will let the, the applicant, um, discuss that in detail. You can see the proposed twenty fa, single-family attached townhomes, um, on the property. And while there will be a variance required to reduce these buffers from fifty feet to twenty feet along the southern property line and thirty feet, um, here, those buffers are consistent with buffers in the immediate vicinity. Um, and so therefore, staff does recommend, um, approval of the land use plan amendment and approval with substitute conditions, um, on the rezoning application. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bragg. At this moment, I'd like to open the floor over, or turn the, uh, the stage over to, uh, the applicant, Ms. Swink.
Thank you so much, uh, for your time, hopefully everyone can hear me.
Mm-hmm, we can.
All right, well, as, um, Ms. Bragg is bringing up the presentation, I just want to, um, quickly say how helpful staff has been, Ms. Bragg, Mr. John Reed, several staff members, as well as both Commissioners, in spending their time with us on this project, and we really appreciate it. Um, we know everyone's very busy, and, um, it's, it's, it's been great, and it's been helpful, so.
All right, well, uh, those are your comments for now, what I'll do is, uh, ask Mr. Matowski.
I think she's just, I think she's just bringing up the PowerPoint, there we go.
Gotcha.
All right, just a little laggy.
That's all right. I know you all have a full agenda, so we'll be, we'll be quick. Um, uh, tonight, I have my development partner, Dave Rattelman with Urban Eco Group, uh, Wright Gardner, our architect, and Linda Dunleavy, um, our legal counsel, uh, with us tonight. I can go to the next slide, please. These are just very quickly pictures of another development that, uh, Dave Rattelman and I worked on, um, for the better part of the early two thousands, uh, that includes, um, sustainable initiatives throughout the horizontal site work, as well as, um, everything, uh, built vertically was, um, certified through EarthCraft, and includes single-family townhouses and condos. And it was designed to be a walkable infill neighborhood on a, um, sort of contaminated site. And the purpose of this is just to show that the kinds of development, um, that we can, that we've worked on together, um, again, the quality and the, the walkability. Um, this shows the zoning, uh, that Ms. Bragg already walked through, it's currently O I, it sits next to the Sloan Apartments, um, uh, to the right, which have a density of just shy of thirty units per acre. And, uh, when Dave and I looked at this, we felt that, uh, rezoning to M R two, to provide more of a residential transition to the single family as opposed to commercial use would be, um, a, a good fit. And this shows, um, it's interesting, the zip code changes of these two parcels, um, they're combined one point three acres as well as the land use, uh, from, from suburban to NC, so in order for us to consolidate them and develop them together, we need them to be the same. Uh, next slide, please. So again, recapping, uh, rezoning from O I to M R two is what we are requesting. We would like to build, uh, townhouses at a height of three stories, and consistent with our background, and everything we've built has been, uh, certified through, um, EarthCraft or other sustainable, um, organizations such as NGBS. Um, these will be, uh, the same. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the site plan, as you'll see, it's almost exactly the same as what Ms. Bragg showed before. And the only, uh, tweaks made were the addition of showing the over-story trees that we intended to include, but weren't shown on the site plan. Um, as a result of comments from, um, the Commissioners. And, uh, it's both on the, along the street and along the, um, private drive that has parallel parking spaces. Um, since, uh, one of the comments also from Community Council that was addressed is the back four units, we have, uh, capped the height of those to be thirty-five feet, which is consistent with single-family homes, and the rest of the units are right about forty feet. Um, all three stories and all within, um, the guidelines of M R two. The open space, um, requirement is fifteen percent, and we are at thirty-nine percent. Um, and we are envisioning that the green space in between the two blocks of townhouses is to be a real community gathering space, you know, get out there, throw a football, um, get to know your neighbors, walk your dog. Um, of course, we'll be, um, complying with the requirements to build sidewalks, um, to connect to the other, um, sidewalks that are, um, some of them are there and some of them are not in this surrounding parcel, so we obviously wanna support walkability to the nearby neighborhood town center. Um, excuse me, and finally, we feel that the, um, construction of townhouses, um, provides us the ability to speak to the missing middle. Um, you know, a demographic that's super important in Atlanta, but often is sort of priced out of the market, so. Um, this is the latest site plan, and if you wanna go to the next slide, it's our last one, this is just the rendering, um, that shows the architectural style that we've come up with, Wright Gardner. Um, again, you can see that courtyard, you can see the units, um, facing La Vista have access and entry out to La Vista to engage with the road. And you have the sidewalks and benches, um, and again, the goal is to have a sense of community within and also engage, um, um, around, uh, with the adjacent areas, so, um, with that, I'll, I'll pause and hope to answer any questions.
Okay. I think what, at this point, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and open the, uh, floor up to the public for anyone wishing to speak in support. Uh, Commissioner Rader, is your hand raised? Did you have a, no, okay. Uh, Mr. Matowski, if you would mind, uh, go ahead and, uh, let's do a call for anyone wishing to speak in support.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. If you would like to speak in support of this item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And at this time, I'm seeing no hands raised, sir.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in opposition.
And if you would like to speak in opposition, pound two, or use the raise hand feature, please. And again, no hands raised, sir.
All right, um, Ms. Swink, I know there was no one that, uh, spoke in opposition or in support, but do you have any final comments?
Uh, no, sir, I'll turn it over to the Commissioners, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Bragg, if you would, please, uh, reiterate your recommendation.
Approval with substitute conditions.
With substitute conditions, okay. All right, uh, again, this is gonna be for, um, back up here. Uh, D five, uh, again, this is Agenda Item, uh, two zero two two dash one one seven six, as well as, uh, N one, which was two two, uh, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, uh, dash one four six nine, uh, Commission Districts two and Super District six. Uh, is there a motion?
I will move to approve the land use amendment, um, and, uh, then the zoning with conditions dated, uh, today, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, the site plan, um, is referenced in the conditions as May eleventh, but, uh, the latest version I have is dated May twelfth, can somebody clarify that? Is there any difference between the May eleventh and May twelfth version of the, uh, site plan?
The applicant can probably best answer that.
Yes. Ms. Swink? Swink?
Yes, I am just double-checking that. Um, I know the intention is certainly the one that we shared. May twelfth is the date of the, the site plan that I, no, excuse me, it is dated May eleventh, we received it on the twelfth, but it is dated May eleventh, so that's the correct one, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so then the May eleventh would properly identify the site plan, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, again, the, uh, plan amendment, uh, is unconditioned. The, uh, zoning is conditioned to, uh, the list of conditions, um, which are nineteen of them dated, uh, today, uh, May twenty-sixth, and the site plan dated, uh, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Rader, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Terry. Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move into the roll call, Commissioner Rader.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, seven zero in the affirmative for the land use amendment, as well as the zoning with those conditions, uh, from the, uh, May twenty-sixth and the site plan of May eleventh. All right, thank you very much, Commissioners, give me one second here, we're gonna go back up to D six, which is Agenda Item twenty twenty-one twenty-six thirty-eight, this is affecting Commission Districts two and Super District six, application of David Kirk to rezone property from NS Neighborhood Shopping District to C one, local commercial district, to allow for development of a new drive-through restaurant at thirty-seven ninety-five, uh, North Druid Hills Road.
And please take the, uh, uh, following item, the SLUP.
The SLUP as well, read that one out. Okay, again, that's for, uh, D seven, uh, Agenda Item twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six thirty-nine. Uh, again, Commission Districts two and Super District six, application of David Kirk to request a special land use permit, a SLUP, to allow a drive-through facility in Town Center character area at thirty-seven ninety-five North Druid Hills Road. And who do we have speaking on this?
Uh, I'll take this one.
All right, Mr. White, go ahead.
Uh, let's see, so, uh, both items, the applicant has, uh, submitted documentation to staff requesting a withdrawal without prejudice for both D six and D seven. Uh, we support the request, and, uh, we recommend withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay. Uh, is. Is the applicant here, Mr. Kirk?
Yes, I am. And the the letter speaks for itself. And in the interest of time, I will let it speak for itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. I believe we still need to open this up to the public for any comments in support of. Mr. Matowski?
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to speak in support of this item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
All right. Let's go ahead and do the same for anyone in opposition.
And if you're in opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And we do have a request from Carol Hayes. I'll ask Carol to unmute. If she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Carol Hayes. I live at 2665 Spicer Lane, which is in the neighborhood directly across from this property. We are very excited that Chick-fil-A has chosen to withdraw their application. However, I we are feel very strongly in this neighborhood that we do not need any kind of a drive-through there. It wasn't that we were opposed to Chick-fil-A being there. We just don't feel like that property is best used as a drive-through. Thank you very much. I'll defer.
And thank you for your comments. Our next request is Brittany Friend. I'll ask Brittany to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there. My name is Brittany Friend. I live at 1177 Druid Walk, Indicator, also right across the street. I agree with Carol Hayes. We, this neighborhood has expressed many times that we do not want to drive through property in that space. The goal is Eden's is coming in to develop the small is to make it more walkable, make it more of a neighborhood-friendly space and having a drive-through area where we see a lot of car traffic and a lot of people coming through, causing more traffic and not walking friendly is not what the neighborhood needs.
And thank you for your comment. Our next request is Michael on his iPhone. I will ask him to unmute if he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Michael Pisani. I live at 2756 Mount Olive Drive, Indicator. I just want to second both of their statements. I appreciate the commissioner's time. We'll keep it brief tonight. Again, it was nothing with Chick-fil-A. It was triple drive-through, no window speeding, and not in harmony with the stated designation of the town center goal. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your comment. Our next request is from Reverend John Werble. I'll ask him to unmute. If he'd like to start his video, he may. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Werble, Reverend John Werble. I live at 2507 Wilson Woods Drive in the Laurel Ridge neighborhood, about a mile from from the location. I'm one of the board members of the Laurel Ridge Shamrock Civic Association, and we had decided to oppose this as well. The the reasons, the the reasons that have all been mentioned are entirely accurate. It has nothing to do with Chick-fil-A. It has to do with being across the street from a residential neighborhood and already bad traffic. It specifically, though, the one thing we want to highlight is that this particular property is directly across from the primary entrance to our neighborhood. North Druid Woods Court is a split-type boulevard-type of entry, and it's impossible to drive into it most of the day on any day because of the traffic already. We just, something needs to be done in that area to to control traffic. And that'll be the case with the Eden's development as well, with all the new housing and all the new traffic going in. We're very excited about the redevelopment of the mall and hope something can be done to address the problems with the two offset entrances, Birch Road and as an entrance to the Eden's property and North Druid Woods as an entrance to to our neighborhood. Thank you much for all your consideration, and that's all.
And thank you for your comment. Our next request is from Monica. I'll ask Monica to unmute. If she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Monica Cuevas. I live at 2716 Mount Olive Drive, just a few blocks away from this intersection from Druid Chick-fil-A. Nothing against the business. I enjoy it. I am a client, but I I am agree with my fellow neighbors that it would just not be convenient to have that drive-through there. I am very excited about Eden's proposal for commercial residential, so I'm looking forward for Chick-fil-A to be accommodated in that area. And I just want to state that. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our next request is from Lynn Pascoletti. I will ask Lynn to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lynn Pascoletti. I live at 1275 Blueberry Trail, and I'm in the neighborhood behind the entrance to the mall, probably about half a mile away. But we use the entrance on North Druid Woods Court and coming in and out all the time. Like everybody said, it's a nightmare getting in and out of here. But first off, I want to say thank you to the presiding officers, the commissioners, and the public for all the comment because this has been a long, arduous task. And I'm hoping that with the Eden's redevelopment, that the Chick-fil-A will find a home within that, those boundaries, because we're not opposed to Chick-fil-A, like we said before, but we need it to be not 41 cars coming in and out of the entry. And and I do appreciate all that you guys do to make sure that we, the public gets to be heard. So thank you very much.
And thank you for your comment. Mr. Presiding Officer, that appears to exhaust all the requests for public comment at this time.
Okay. Out of courtesy, Mr. Kirk, is there anything else you'd like to add?
One moment. Let me get him back. There we go.
Yes, I feel like I've been kicked while I'm down, but I think it's important for the board to understand that what this will do is perpetuate a a bad situation near the corner of North Druid Hills Road and Lawrenceville Highway. It will disadvantage a minority business owner who has given his heart and soul to the neighborhood for many years. But we understand the opposition has had success, and we're going to continue to operate as best we can in that location and hope and pray that there will be no serious issues with with traffic and continued accidents as people make the dangerous entrance into and out of that site. But thank you very much for your patience while we've worked through this over the last year or more. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kirk. Mr. White, could you reiterate the request for tonight?
A withdrawal without prejudice for D6 and D7.
Okay, all right. And again, just so that we're clear, this is Agenda Item 2638 and 2639 for Commission Districts 2 and Super District 6. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion.
I move to accept the withdrawal without prejudice for D6 and D7, and I have a comment.
All right, Commissioner Rader, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, thank you very much. Commissioner Rader, your comment?
I want to thank all the parties involved for their patience in the processing of this particular claim. It was a moving target based upon larger evolution of the neighborhood. And the staff recommendation, I think, identifies several valid reasons why this is not an appropriate location for this particular activity. However, we hope that the business will remain in the area, either at its current location or at another location that is better suited to that business. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Commissioner Terry, any comments?
No.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. I'll go ahead and move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Um, aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well. That's seven zero on the withdrawal without prejudice for this evening. All right. Well, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Of course, N1 was combined with an earlier one, so we're going to go into Agenda Item N2, which is 2022-1470. Commission Districts 2 and 6, application of La Vista Investors Incorporated care of Hakeem Hillard to modify an existing land use permit, pardon me, special land use permit, and that is S-10-162, excuse me, 16129 in the R85 Residential Medium Lot District to add two adjacent parcels of land containing single-family homes to the synagogue campus and modify the existing slump conditions to allow for two homes to be used as a single-family residence for synagogue parishioners at 1252 Mary Lane. And who will be guiding us on this one tonight?
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
So this proposed request is to add two existing single-family homes to a place of worship campus. And they're required to, they currently have a slump on this property to have the place of worship. And so this slump would take the place of the previously existing one because it was conditioned on that previously existing site plan. So the proposed amendment would add these two homes to this existing campus. You can see it is zone R85, and it's at the corner of La Vista and Christmas. Here you can see the future land use of this property is suburban. An aerial image showing this proposed, this location of this place of worship and the two subject parcels containing detached family home on on each, a single-family home on each parcel. Here is the site plan showing those two tracks and the existing place of worship. Based on the submitted information, the proposed two homes will continue to be used only for single-family residential use, and no new additions or modifications are proposed. Therefore, it appears that the single-family residential homes to be added are compatible with adjacent and surrounding residential properties and consistent with the policies and strategies of the suburban character area to protect stable neighborhoods from incompatible development that could alter established single-family residential development patterns and density. Therefore, staff does recommend approval with conditions. And there are 12 conditions, including that the two residential structures shall only be used for single-family residential uses. No new access is allowed, and that the residential lot on Pine Tree Circle will not be developed to contain any part of the synagogue building or parking area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bragg. Right now, I'd like to open the floor to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Presiding Officer, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Hakeem Hilliard with Hilliard Starkey Law. I'm here this evening on behalf of La Vista Investors and Congregation Orhatora, seeking this amendment to the special land use permit for the synagogue currently located at this property. As you know from staff report, this synagogue has been a place of worship at this location since 2010, when it was originally adopted. There were several conditions associated with the property when read together. Clearly, we're intended to make sure that the synagogue was able to function in a way that blends in scale and operation with the adjacent and surrounding community. So there's conditions related to restricting access of Mary Lane and Christmas Lane, which are the side streets that bordered the property. There was one single entrance at La Vista Row that it was restricted to. One sign that it was limited to, the height of the structures on the property were restricted to 35 feet, no more than 73 parking spaces. The proposal we're seeking support for this evening do not conflict with any of those conditions that were originally adopted. The two adjacent parcels, which combined comprise a little less than a half acre of land for the two residential structures there are properties that La Vista Investors purchased several years ago and are currently used to house officials from the synagogue. Are being used that for that purpose right now. This request before you this evening is really a housekeeping matter. The synagogue is interested in combining the parcels to, for tax purposes, to instead of having three separate loans for these three parcels, to have one loan and to continue to use it as it's currently being used. We met with the staff and and some of the conditions were amended to accommodate this request, although there's driveways to the single, to single-family homes. There's, we're going to continue to restrict access to the to the larger synagogue campus. Through those properties, they're going to be used for their, how they're being used currently is for single-family homes. So we're here this evening seeking your request for this amendment to allow us to to do that in that way. So we're interested in answering any questions you may have. I'm joined this evening with Mr. David Price, who is official with us, an official with the synagogue, who was a part of the original request. We're pleased to say that in the years that we've been at this location, there's, we've we've enjoyed support from the adjacent and surrounding community. Many of the congregants from the synagogue live in this area. As you know, walk to service on the Sabbath, so it's very convenient. And we're here available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hillard. Mr. Price, if you have some brief comments?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you all for having us this evening. Hakeem, thank you for all your hard work. We're very excited. Again, I think Hakeem laid it out perfectly. We intend to use these as two affordable housing components for the synagogue, and that's it. Appreciate everybody's help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. At this time, Mr. Matowski, let's open the floor to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
Very well, sir. Thank you. If you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify yourself by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And at this time, I'm seeing no additional hands raised, sir, or no hands raised.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the floor up to anyone speaking in opposition.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And no hands raised at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matowski. At this moment, Mr. Hillard, I know there's no need for rebuttal, but if there's any additional comments, now would be the time to make them.
Thank you. No, no additional comments. Thank you again to staff for working with us on this application as we proceeded through the process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hillard. If I may, Ms. Bragg, if you wouldn't mind reiterate your recommendation?
Approval with conditions.
All right. And let me go ahead and sound this one off right quick. Again, this was N2, 2022-1470, affecting Commission Districts 2 and Super District 6. And at this moment, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, I will move to approve item or item into 1470 with these recommended staff conditions.
Second.
Okay, got a proper motion and second. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Seeing no hands raised, I'll go ahead and move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, seven zero in the affirmative on that one. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hillard. Moving on to the next one, N3, which is 2022-1471. This is before Commission Districts 3 and 6. The application of PMZ Developers LLC care of Battlelock PC to rezon property from Boulder Crest Cedar Grove Moreland Overlay District Tier 5 Corridor Corridor 1/R100 Residential Medium Lot to RSM Small Lot Residential Mix District to allow for single-family detached homes and single-family attached townhomes at 4101 Boulder Crest Road. And who will we have speak to us tonight from staff?
I have, sir.
All right, Mr. White, go ahead.
Okay, just briefly, the applicant has submitted a request for a full-cycle deferral, and staff supports that request and put that forward as a recommendation.
All right. If if the applicant's available, let's go ahead and hear, oh, Ms. Blumenthal.
Hi, good evening. Dani Blumenthal, Battlelock PC, 3562 Hebertham at Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. Based on the request of the commissioner and staff, as Mr. White stated, we'd like to request a full-cycle deferral to allow some more time to work with staff and with the community as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Blumenthal. Mr. Matowski, let's open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in support.
Yes, sir. If you'd like to speak in support of this item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And there are no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right. Then let's go ahead and do that, open the floor up for anyone in opposition to the application.
And for opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And for opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. White, if you wouldn't mind, uh, reiterating your recommendation?
Full-cycle deferral, full-cycle deferral. All right.
Uh, this is again for Commission Districts, uh, three and six. And again, this is Agenda Item twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen-seventy-one. I'll open the floor up for a motion.
Motion to defer full cycle.
Full cycle. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Proper motion second, uh, for a full-cycle deferral. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move into the role. Uh, Commissioner Raider?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That's seven-zero in the affirmative on the full-cycle deferral. Uh, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is
Please take N four and five together.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Raider. These will be, uh, Agenda Items N four and five, uh, twenty-twenty-two fourteen-seventy-two and twenty-twenty-two fourteen-seventy-three. Uh, this is affecting Commission Districts two and six. Application of Ryan Jones PE to rezone properties from O and I, that's Office Institutional Conditional, to NS Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District to allow construction of a medical office with a drive-through at seventeen-ninety-nine Clermont Road. I'm going to go ahead and sound off, uh, fourteen-seventy-three. Again, this is for Commission Districts two and Super District six. Application of Ryan Jones PE for special land use permit, SLUP, uh, to allow a drive-through, uh, medical facility at the NS Neighborhood Shopping District at seventeen-ninety-nine Clermont Road. And, uh, who will be our staff person on this item?
I'll take these two as well.
All right, Mr. White, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so we received notice, uh, for N four and, and five from the applicant. And, uh, the applicant and his team has requested, uh, withdrawal without prejudice for both cases.
That's staff's recommendation, withdraw without prejudice for both. Okay. Uh, well, I'll give the, uh, applicant an opportunity to speak if he or she would like.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, uh, again, uh, thanks everyone on the, on the Board of Commissioners tonight for your time and patience. With a lot of thought and, uh, and consideration, uh, my client is, uh, indeed asking for a withdrawal without prejudice. I don't want to waste, uh, too many, anybody's time, so I'll just turn it straight over.
All right, Mr. Jones, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Metowski, let's go ahead and move into the public comment opportunities. Uh, let's open the floor to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
If you'd like to speak in support of the application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. We have a request from Colleen Cusino, or actually, no, that's me, she might be on the other, so that hand is no longer raised. So one more time, anyone in favor or, or in support, pound two or the raise hand feature. And there are no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, Mr. Metowski, let's go ahead and open it to anyone wishing to speak in opposition.
All right, pound two or the raise hand feature if you are in opposition. And now we have Colleen Cusino. I'll ask Colleen to unmute. If she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Colleen Cusino. I live at ten-thirty-one Emery Park Place, Decatur. I'm speaking on behalf of the Villas of Emery Park and Emery Park Manor in opposition to N four and N five. Regardless of the withdrawal without prejudice, I feel it's important for us to continue to make our case in proposition of this development. As you know, the full community council unanimously, unanimously voted to deny the application and the planning commissioners voted for a two-cycle deferral. At the pre-submitting meeting, community council meeting and planning commissioners meeting, not one individual or group spoke in support of this development. While Hayes James and Bio Solutions likely will continue to change their site plan to meet specified compliance, they still will need to seek additional variances to achieve their goal for building on these two parcels. This is of great concern to our communities. Buffer issues remain a problem for us. The current transitional buffer is fifty feet when abutting of residential zoning. If approved, the developer has informed us that they will immediately seek a variance to reduce the northern property line to zero feet and the east property line to ten feet. The need to reduce these buffers demonstrates that these two parcels simply are not appropriate for this size development or drive-through business model. We're extremely concerned that in both the rezoning and SLUP applications, if they are approved, more variances will be requested by Hayes James and Bio Solutions. Once such variances are granted, it could set an undesirable precedent for future development along and adjacent to the Clermont Corridor. The site plan, their ever-changing design concept of the building and its purpose and use are still of great concern to us. The building height is noted as thirty-five feet. The parcels already sit more than nine feet above the community grade in this area. The finished building then would be approximately forty-five feet above the adjacent community backyards. This would be a privacy issue for the contiguous homes. Additionally, any lighting either on the building or in the parking lot most likely would cause light pollution and intrusion for the homeowners directly adjacent to the building lot. Refuse. The dumpster storage area is shown at the front of the property. However, a note on the drawing shows the pad is shown for illustrative purposes only. This means it could be relocated to the rear of the property where an early morning or evening pickup of the dumpsters would cause additional noise to the adjacent residents as well as trash migration and potential rodent and pest problems. The exam rooms noted on the site plan. While not shown on the design concept, their plan for the number of exam rooms has gone from one to two and now is up to as many as four according to Hayes James and Bio Solutions during the May three meeting. This suggests they still have not settled on a business model. Originally proposed as a drive-through, excuse me, originally proposed as a drive-through urgent care facility, the increase in interior exam rooms from one to four suggests their expectation that more patients would need to be treated inside the building than through the window of a vehicle. There's already oversaturation of urgent and immediate care facilities. In, um, currently within a five-point-five mile radius, there are fifteen immediate and urgent care facilities. We feel this continued overdevelopment of light facilities demonstrates no historical reference as to its success as a drive-through facility. Rezoning from O I to N S is inconsistent with the twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan with respect to vehicle usage. As a drive-through facility, this site actually depends on increased vehicular traffic and vehicle dependency to be successful. This development neither reduces vehicular traffic nor reduces vehicular dependency, which is a goal of the plan. Traffic, traffic and more traffic. According to the proposal, quote, "The only real remaining issues are traffic, which can be heavily controlled by appointment-based visits and revised traffic engineering plan." Now their business model has become an appointment-based visits model, which was not the concept originally proposed to be developed on these parcels. Bio Solutions has some unrealistic, uh, solutions as we have determined through review of their revisions. They plan to install a no-left-turn sign driving southbound on Clermont to deter anyone from trying to turn left into their site. According to Hayes James, quote, "Everyone wishing to enter the site will need to find an alternate path or approach to turning right into the site coming northbound on Clermont." Their solution emphasizes the inappropriateness of this business for this site. And their unrealistic assessment, the patients will not attempt to turn left simply because there is a no-left-turn sign demonstrates their desire to cite this development regardless of traffic and pedestrian safety issues. Additionally, their plan requires patients who are traveling southbound, southbound to find other areas, streets or parking lots to turn around and so they can travel back to the site to make a right-hand turn into their facility. This option of finding another way to enter their building likely means patients will be using other business parking lots to make this transition to travel north on Clermont, causing issues for the already established facilities on Clermont Road. Deceleration lane. It is noted on the design that the Georgia Department of Transportation requires a right-turn deceleration lane only if greater than seventy-five right-hand turns per day are anticipated. The notation also indicates that Bio Solutions anticipates only fifty right-hand lanes. None of this can be factually known with this proposed facility. We believe the absence of a deceleration lane is a significant problem and there is no room on this site for that lane to be constructed. Both Dr. Lefkove and Ron Sander state the healthcare system is fractured. Most of us can agree with that. However, their model makes few, if any, improvements to the fractured system. The problems with healthcare are not the weight or lack of immediate attention at a healthcare facility or immediacy of filling a prescription. Rather, they are cost and equal access to quality care. We have consistently stated our opposition to this development at every juncture. Both the community council vote to deny and the planning commissioners vote to defer strongly suggest to us the county supports our opposition. We hope the Board of Commissioners also will accept our position and respect that portion of twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan that includes the community's vision for the future. Development of these two parcels by Bio Solutions is not how we envision our community's future. And we ask for unanimous denial of both N four and N five. And I appreciate the time you've given me this evening. I, I know it may be a moot point, but we felt compelled to be on record again, uh, as our collective opposition to this. And I thank you very much for your time and your attention.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cusino. Appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. Metowski?
Yes, our next request is from John Kuhn. I will ask John to unmute. If he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, um, I'm John Kuhn. I live at nine-eighty-five Emery Park Place, which is in the neighborhood that Ms. Custano represents and, uh, uh, who's, who's, uh, interest in this she, uh, so very effectively, uh, stated. I would, uh, emphasize, uh, what she said. I agree with everything she said. We need this buffer between our two neighborhoods. We've been there, this, our neighborhood's been there for approximately twenty years. Uh, and it's dependent on this buffer. It's appropriate. And to reduce it just doesn't make any sense, uh, for the compatibility of this site with their neighborhood. Second problem that can't be solved, as I see it, is the traffic problems. Ms. Custano mentioned those problems, uh, and I agree with all of them. I'm a civil engineer with an environmental engineering focus. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I don't see how these traffic problems can be solved. And in fact, I think that this facility will exacerbate lots of problems that already exist in this area. There's a third issue that I ran across recently in looking at this. And I didn't realize that this, this, this site depends on septic tank for disposal of its onsite wastes. It's not connected to the sewer. Folks, we will have a, uh, there's a huge potential for a problem here, both with this, the seepage from the drainage field, I think, seeping out of the, uh, higher elevation into the drainage way that is between this site and our residential area. And you certainly don't want that. In addition, uh, there can be medical waste discharged to the sewer here into the septic tank that would be toxic to the septic tank and prevent it from doing its work. All it would take would be, uh, some disinfectant poured down the, um, uh, the drain of a facility to, uh, eliminate biological activity in the septic tank and in the drainage fields. All it would take would be, uh, say some alcohol that generally is degradable but could cause a shock to this smaller system. I've worked with biological treatment systems my entire career and this in itself is reason to quickly deny this, uh, petition. Thanks very much. I appreciate your, uh, consideration of this matter.
And thank you for your comments. At this time, sir, it appears that, that exhausts the request for public comment on this item.
Okay, uh, uh, at this moment, we'll go ahead and offer the applicant an opportunity to speak again if, if so choosing.
One moment while I get it back. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, um, again, uh, there, there's a lot of things that were said uh, in opposition that, um, just simply aren't true. I'm not going to go into a, a great amount of detail, uh, to rebut anything since we're withdrawing. Uh, the one thing I will say is, you know, the, the traffic is, is always going to be a concern. It is always going to be on the resident's mind. I, I, I strongly feel that no matter what or no matter who goes into this property and decides to develop it, they are going to be met with a ferocious amount of opposition, uh, mainly by, this is Cusino, mainly by Mr. Kuhn, mainly by Mr. Kissner, mainly by, uh, a, a majority of people that have, uh, voiced their opposition. Especially with, uh, Mr. Kuhn. Uh, we were not going to have, uh, this, this, uh, facility beyond septic. We already had approval to, uh, attach to the county, county sewer, so that, that's gone. But again, I, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail and, and rebut, uh, a lot of these oppositions. Um, so I'm just going to turn it straight over to staff.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I appreciate your comments. At this point, I'd like to ask Mr. White to, uh, reiterate his request.
Withdrawal without prejudice for, uh, both N four and N five.
Okay. And again, this is, uh, fourteen-seventy-two, fourteen-seventy-three affecting Commission Districts two and Super District six. And at this moment, I'll ask for a motion.
I will move that we accept the withdrawal without prejudice on both items. And if I can give a second, I have a comment.
Is there a second? Commissioner Terry?
Yep.
All right.
So I want to thank, uh, all stakeholders for their engagement in the, uh, project. I believe that, uh, viral solutions, uh, concept has promised in DeKalb and certainly, uh, their business has been, uh, successful and has been something of a lifesaver during the pandemic when they provided, uh, capacity for, um, uh, COVID testing and vaccination, um, in the community. And learned a little bit more about the drive-through model, which I think led them to, um, ID, uh, ideate this, um, this concept. We hope that they will find an appropriate location to be able to develop the concept. But, uh, for a variety of reasons that are indicative, um, of the, uh, have been identified in the staff analysis and the necessity for various variances. This is not a good location for those activities. These two sites, like others around it, are converted residences. And so they present a, a real challenge when it comes, uh, to finding ways to, uh, fully exploit the O I zoning that has been, um, uh, conferred upon them many years ago. But, uh, we are very sensitive to the interests of surrounding stakeholders, um, but also respect, uh, the interest of the owners of the property. So, uh, this withdrawal will allow, um, alternative, uh, ideas to be advanced for this property or for, uh, retrofit or, um, uh, renovation of, uh, the existing houses that have been used as professional offices for, uh, more than a generation. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I forward the withdrawal of the site.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Raider. Again, we have a proper motion second, uh, for the withdrawal with prejudice. And Commissioners, I'll go ahead and
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. Correct. Uh, Commissioner Raider?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That's seven-zero in the affirmative for the withdrawal without prejudice. All right. Next, we're going to move on to Agenda Item N six, which is, uh, twenty-twenty-two dash fourteen-seventy-four. This affecting Commission Districts four and Super District seven. Application of, uh, oh my goodness, uh, Ali Gaba Incorporated, doing business as Abigail Manor PHC for the special land use permit, the SLUP. Application for personal care home, uh, for up to four individuals in the R one hundred residential medium lot district at five-one-eight Lake Mitchell Road. And, uh, who will be speaking with us from staff today?
That will be me. Yes, sir. As stated, this application is for a special land use permit, um, for a personal care home for up to four individuals within an R one hundred, um, district. The staff recommendation is for approval with condition. I'll, I'll come back to that. My slides. Sorry, one second. As you can see, this is the subject parcel. Um, it is within the R one hundred zoning district um, and within the suburban land use district. Um, here is an aerial of the, um, proposed personal care home as well as, um, a site photo. Um, the applicant also provided, um, floor The applicant also provided floor plans showing the two stories of living space. The addition of one additional resident is not expected to change the manner of operation as it is currently operating as a personal care home for three individuals. So the addition of an of one additional person would not create is not expected to create any adverse impacts on any adjoining residential properties, nor is the proposal expected to increase traffic levels. The hours of operation will continue to be those of a typical residence and are not expected to adversely impact adjoining properties. In addition, the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan recognizes the need to provide specialized housing for adults in DeKalb County who require twenty-four hour watchful oversight. As stated in how housing policy number seven, increase the availability of special needs housing to meet the growing population by increasing the capacity of this existing personal care home, even by one resident, the proposal implements this policy. So the staff would like to recommend approval with one condition. However, there was a discrepancy in the public notice for this application, and therefore staff is recommending a thirty day deferral to a public hearing in order to correct this oversight. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Bragg. Is the applicant here to speak in support?
And Ms. Bragg, I'm not sure who the applicant is on this one. I'm not sure if Ms. Bragg, if you are the applicant, if you want to, please raise your hand or pound two if you're on the phone.
Looking as well.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised, sir, so I'll defer to Ms. Bragg. Oh, Diane Ford has raised her hand, so I will ask Diane to unmute. If you'd like to start your video, please do.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I'd just like to say that I am a resident at the villages of Eastlake, and I've been in this area for the last five years. And I'm excited.
Are you actually the applicant or were you here to speak in favor?
And speak in favor.
Okay, if you could just hold on for a minute, we're seeing if we can identify an applicant. So thank you for your patience with us. Ms. Bragg, have you found any information or? Sure.
No, and I'm I'm not seeing.
All right, last call. If you are the applicant, pound two, or please use the raise hand feature.
Mr. Witaske, I see Williams Evan has a acknowledgement.
Oh, they're clapping or something? Okay, hang on a second. Go ahead, Williams Evan. Go ahead and.
Okay, okay, I've been unmuted. Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. Are you the applicant?
Yes, I'm the applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I am, I'm, I'm in, I agree with what Ms. Bragg all said. It's all that I had to say. We've been in operation since two thousand and three. We've had no issues with our neighbors. This is a need-based expansion. And that's all I have to say, but I I'm not aware of the reservation that was expressed by Ms. Bragg.
Okay, I I think Ms. Bragg had suggested that there might have been a notification error, and so out of abundance of caution for the code, she's requesting a thirty day deferral so that we can make sure we've sort of dotted the i's and crossed the t's for public hearing requirements. Okay.
All right.
All right, Mr. Evan, thank you. Mr. Witaske, I guess if you wouldn't mind, open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in support.
Absolutely. And again, if you'd like to speak in support, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on the phone. And the young lady that had raised her hand, I apologize, I forgot the name. Do you recall that, Mr. Presiding Officer?
I think it was Ms. Ford had raised her hand.
Thank you. Let me get Ms. Ford back on. I'll ask her to unmute. If you'd like to start your video, Ms. Ford, you may. And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, I commented. Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Ford. We'd like to hear your comments.
No, Ms. Ford just wanted to say that I I was a little bit premature. I'm I'm listening out for the next project.
Okay, okay. All right, Ms. Ford, thank you.
And if there's anyone else that would like to speak on this, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two from a phone. And there are no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, Mr. Witaske, let's go ahead and ask anyone who's ready to speak in opposition to this application.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition again, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And at this time, no hands raised, sir.
Okay. Mr. Evan, no one has spoken either for or against, but I'll give you a final opportunity to speak if you'd like.
And I'm sending him another invite.
I have I have nothing more to say, except I want to know the reservation expressed by Ms. Bragg, which I was not aware of.
Okay, if you give us one second, we'll have Ms. Bragg go ahead and state her request and and if you can go into a little bit of detail on the concerns.
Sure, Mr. Howard Johnson spoke with you yesterday evening on the phone regarding the issue. There was a wrong date on the sign that was posted in the front yard. So just in order to clearly make sure that the public is aware of of this meeting and of your application, that sign needs to be reposted.
And Ms. Bragg, what is the what is the recommendation for tonight?
Thirty day deferral to a public hearing.
Okay, all right. And for everyone, so we're clear, we're talking about agenda item twenty twenty-two fourteen seventy-four. This is affecting Commission Districts four and Super District seven, and at this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officers. At this time, I'll make a motion for a thirty day deferral for a public hearing.
All right, thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. For that second, if there's no comments, we'll go ahead and move into the roll. Commissioner Rader?
All right.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Hi.
Commissioner Terry? Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
All right, we've got a six zero in the affirmative for a thirty day deferral.
Yes, that was not.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Terry?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here. And you go, okay, we'll go ahead and bump that up to seven zero in the affirmative for a thirty day deferral, and we'll see this one back in thirty days. All right, commissioners, we're going to move on to N seven, which is agenda item twenty twenty-four fourteen seventy-five. And this affects Commission Districts three and six. Application of Eastlake Holdings Incorporated to rezone property from C one, local commercial, and M Light Industrial to M R two, medium density residential two for development of a multifamily and townhome development at eighteen forty-seven Second Avenue. And who do we have speaking on this tonight from staff? I'll take this one. All right, Mr. White, go ahead.
Okay, this subject properties currently contain a mixture of zoning designations. Part of the subject property is zone M Light Industrial, and the other is zone C one, local commercial. So you can see the zoning map before you. Second Avenue along the east Fayetteville Road to the west and Glenwood Avenue to the north. Here's an aerial of the subject properties outlined in black. Photos of the site. Property is currently undeveloped. This is the future land use map for the subject area. The subject properties are highlighted here in black. As you can see, they're located in our neighborhood center, Activity Center, Character Area. If you would note that the this particular character area is designed to promote mixed use activities to the degree possible to try to reduce auto-dependent uses in this area, mixture of commercial and residential uses, compatibility with surrounding area, and hopefully provide a mixture of residential and commercial options that will serve the surrounding community. So based on that, this is the applicant's current proposal for the site. Proposes for two hundred and eighty-one units in a combination of single-family attached townhome units and multifamily dwelling units. You can see the townhome units here adjacent to Second Avenue, and then the multifamily here in the back. Additionally, the proposal also includes here in the orange to retail segments to provide some internal commercial options for the residents. Also of note, there's a pavilion, a large common open space here to the center of the development that will be used for active and passive recreation for both residents within the development and the surrounding community. The three access points shown proposed along Second Avenue. It's northern one for ingress only. It's right one here for egress only, and then there'll be a right in, right out here at the southernmost point of the subject property. Here's another elevation rendering of this proposal from the Second Avenue looking to the west. Once again, three access points. Make sure buildings here, the townhome units, multifamily, and there'll be retail on the ground level of the multifamily buildings. Additionally, in coordination with the commissioners on this project, the applicant has provided some additional landscape drawings and landscape plan documents just showing how the enhanced open space and landscaping will be planted throughout the site. You can see. There's also a note, there'll be an extensive pedestrian network through the subject property. Also of discussion, I'm sure you all have received tons of emails regarding the access to the site and the use of Alexander Avenue, which is this right of way here. So this right of way has never been developed. It's very narrow. Transportation Department has taken a look at it. The applicant has taken a look at it. And just considering the how narrow that particular right of way is, it would not be fit for vehicular traffic. However, the af- the applicant has proffered to use it for pedestrian access to Fayetteville Road as part of this proposal. I hear you have some additional renderings of the landscaping that will be planted throughout with the pedestrian access would potentially look like. Some additional landscape renderings. Edible landscaping will also be included, bio swell that assists with stormwater runoff and filtration.
That's in District six.
And so with that, based on the number of land use policy goals that this proposal checks as it relates to the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, staff recommends approval with substitute conditions as provided earlier this afternoon.
All right, Mr. White, thank you very much. At this moment, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
We're here, Mr. Chair.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta, and I am here in the conference room with the folks from Perennial Properties who have submitted the development proposal that's before you this evening. I'm going to run through six points that support the approval of our application, and then I'm going to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal to allow people who want to speak in support to talk once we come back for rebuttal. The first thing that supports the approval of our application is the fact that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So this is exactly the type of development that the county has said it wants to see at this location. If we can go to the next slide. So that's the first point in support of the application. The second point is that it accommodates a reduction in future traffic. Perennial has submitted a trip generation memo by Kim Lee Horn that showed a couple of things. The first thing is that this down zoning substantially cuts the amount of future traffic that would be generated by developing this property from what its current zoning would allow to to happen. So approving our application is a traffic reduction measure in and of itself. And in addition, Kim Lee Horn has shown that we can completely offset the developments already reduced traffic impacts by adding dedicated turn lanes in front of the site and converting a northbound right turn lane at Second Avenue in Glenwood into a through lane. So that's the second point that supports the approval of our application. The next point is the publicly accessible green space that we discussed. And if we could go to the next slide, the the heart of the proposed development would be a two acre green space that is activated with retail amenities. Like the rest of the development, this green space would be monitored using a smart camera system with talk down speakers that would enable off-site security personnel to speak directly to people on the site. If we can move to the next slide, I think that's the that that's the isometric that you saw before, and then if we can move to the next slide. The next point that supports the approval of our application would be enhanced pedestrian mobility. Alexander Avenue is currently a public dirt road that runs between Fayetteville Road and our site, as Mr. White explained. Perennial has agreed to improve Alexander Avenue with a pedestrian path with enhanced landscape and lighting at its own expense. And the path will continue through our site to create a direct pedestrian connection between Second Avenue and the Publix on Fayetteville Road. If we could move to the next slide, the next point is that we will incorporate productive urban landscaping and ecological stormwater management. And the the these measures will include elements such as pervious parking spaces, the bio soils that Mr. White described before, flowering orchard trees and pollinator, excuse me, pollinator gardens, as well as edible annual landscaping. And then the final point is that we have strong community support. If you'll move to the next page. Next two pages, sorry. One more. Perennial has held numerous meetings with community stakeholders, both formal and informal, and that has resulted in more than fifty letters of support being submitted to the county on our part, on our behalf. So for all of those foregoing reasons, we ask you to approve our application, and we will reserve our time at this point. May I have a time check on how much time we do have left?
Madam Clerk?
Eleven minutes.
Eleven minutes, okay. All right, Mr. Witaske, with that, let's open the floor to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. If you'd like to speak in favor of this particular item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. Our first request is from Ajmal, A J M A L. I will ask them to unmute. If they'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record. Oops, you're still on mute, sir. I am sending you an unmute request. All right, one more time, sending you an unmute request. All right, maybe you can work out your issue. Let's keep you. There you go. There you go. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Ajmal. My address is five seven zero Fayetteville Road, and I'm in favor of the new development.
Okay, any any other comments?
No, that's it.
Very well. Thank you so much for your comment. Our next request is from Plemon El Amin. I will ask them to unmute. If they'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I mean, ma'am, Plemon Al Amin, and I would like to support, and I want to mention that Ajmal, who just spoke, he's a, he owns a barber shop in the plaza. I'm a ma'am of the mosque, and we support the project perennial has met with us and the community on several occasions. We also support the idea of the walk, walking path. We also support the idea of the walk, walking path on, through Alexander. Uh, we've been trying to work with the county to develop that, to pave that road, but a walk path with lighting will be excellent. So on behalf of our mosque community, uh, we support this project.
Thank you so much for your comment. Our next request is from Muhammad Jihad. I will ask them to unmute. If they would like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, my name is Muhammad Jihad. I'm located here at five six six Fayetteville Road. I'm also a part of the mosque community. I have a business here, a restaurant. And so, uh, overall, I am in support of the development. You know, seeing Ella over there off of Glenwood, right next to Publix, uh, it gives me a, uh, breath of fresh air seeing that develop there. And then also, if they are approved and able to get developed behind the mosque, I think there'll be a growth for the community abroad anyway.
Very well. Thank you so much for your comment. Our next request is from Diane Ford. I'll ask Diane to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may, and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Diane Ford, and I reside in the villages of Eastlake, at twenty-nine twenty-seven Links Drive. And I would also, I'm also in support of seeing the community develop. I've been here for five years, and I, I think it would be a fantastic change. Um, we've also discussed the possibility of affordable housing for some of the residents at the villages of Eastlake. So we'll definitely offer the residents there more opportunity to, you know, go from renting to be, to homeownership. So I'm very much in support of the project.
And thank you very much for your comments. At this time, it appears that the, uh, requests for comments are exhausted.
All right, uh, Mr. Matowski, let's open the floor who, to anyone that's wanting to speak in opposition.
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to speak in opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature. Our first request is from John. I will ask him to unmute. If he'd like to start his video, he may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, John Wushai, thank you. Um, and I also have here with me Gwen Davies, who would like to speak if, uh, separately, if that's possible. I'm John Wushai. I live across the street from the proposed site at Eastlake Commons on Dancing Fox Road. Very grateful to Commissioners Johnson and Terry for coming to our neighborhood recently to hear our concerns in person. What we've been asking for all along is to, um, is, is approval with one essential condition, and that's to provide public vehicular access points on Fayetteville Road and at Dancing Fox Road. And at the same time, we know that the community council voted to defer, and the planning commission voted to defer, and we would support a deferral. Um, deferral would allow time to complete the requested connections that we've already asked for and that have already been initiated, and it would allow time to see the developers' counter proposals for traffic, um, which have been mentioned but not really shared with us in any detail. Um, so please do vote to support our one essential condition statement, or at a minimum, uh, please vote to defer for a full cycle. And with your permission, I'd like to change, ju- jump out of my seat and let Gwen Davies speak.
Great, and thank you. And Ms. Davies, please state your name and address for the record as well.
Yeah, I agree. We're in St. Nar. Yeah, my name is Gwen Davies, seven oh four Dancing Fox Road, Decatur, across the street from the proposed property. We're in favor, but we may need a deferral, and that's because at this point, Perennial does not own the access to to Fayetteville. However, it is quite, we'll be able to acquire that property. Also, we really want a site plan that aligns the entrance with Eastlake Commons where there is the majority of the across-the-street neighbors, so there can be a safe crosswalk and future development farther south, where possibly if we ever needed one, we could have a four-way stop. So we're really asking for a deferral or conditions. Thank you.
And thank you, and again, thanks to both of you for your comments. At this time, sir, I'm seeing no additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matowski. Uh, Mr. Buckley, if you'd like, you've got a few minutes to speak, uh, for any rebuttal or comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a couple of, of remarks, uh, relative to the, the opposition points. Uh, and really, I'm just gonna read directly from the staff report for our application. Uh, and the planning staff said that the site plan for the proposed development shows that a large wooded area on the west side of the site is to remain natural, and putting a driveway through it would involve destroying trees and re-grading, both of which are not recommended because of consequences to stormwater drainage, habitat, and the climate. Now, what the staff did not mention in that, uh, in that statement is, in addition to all of those things, if we, uh, what we're being asked to do to provide a direct connection to Fayetteville Road is to tear down an existing house to accommodate cars, uh, cutting through our site from Second Avenue. Uh, and that's just not a tenable, uh, reasonable, uh, option, particularly since we don't own property that fronts on Fayetteville. So we don't have any Fayetteville Road frontage. Uh, the other thing that the staff said that, is that another suggestion is to connect the dead-end Alexander Avenue to the internal circulation system of the site. Transportation manager Patrice Keter has said that Alexander Avenue is not suitable. Uh, basically, we met with Patrice Keter, and she said that, uh, this is a substandard right-of-way. The county requires a right-of-way to have at least fifty-five feet of width. This is a forty-foot wide right-of-way. Uh, and she said she doesn't foresee any circumstances under which her office would approve Alexander Avenue for, for vehicular access. So that's why we are currently proposing the pedestrian path, uh, at that location. Uh, we also have heard, uh, the, uh, Eastlake Commons feedback regarding safely being able to cross Second Avenue. And we have, uh, a set, a set of proposed conditions that we are offering to supplement the staff's recommended conditions. And one of those would require us to provide a crosswalk, uh, uh, across, uh, Second Avenue. That would allow the folks at Dancing Fox to cross Second, use the path to get over to the Publix and all of the retail services, uh, in its immediate vicinity. Uh, so, at the end of the day, uh, the secondary access issue is not one that we can, uh, accommodate. And we have done the best we can by, uh, agreeing to improve Alexander Avenue with not only a pedestrian path, but also landscaping, uh, at our own expense. And so, you know, we have addressed those, uh, those concerns, uh, as much as we reasonably can. And we also have, uh, Harrison Forder here with us. He's with Kim Lee Horn. If anybody has any questions, uh, about, uh, the improvements that, uh, that we are proposing, he's here to, to respond to those. Uh, and with that, I will wrap up my remarks.
All right, Mr. Buckley, thank you very much for those comments. I just want to acknowledge Mr., I hope I pronounced your name, Wu Chet, uh, that your hand is raised, but, uh, the moment, the opportunity for, um, um, comment has already been passed. Uh, with that, I'd like to ask Mr. White for, uh, his staff recommendations.
Approval with conditions, substitute conditions.
Substitute conditions, okay. Uh, and, uh, just so we're clear, we're talking about, uh, agenda item N seven, twenty twenty-two fourteen seventy-five. This is for Commission Districts Three and Super District Six. And at this time, Commissioners, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Presiding Officer, make a motion. Uh, we defer for thirty days with public hearing.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, uh, Commissioners, uh, Larry Johnson and Ted Tarr. If there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and move into the roll.
Just one, just one, just have the developer just to continue to meet with the community, 'cause I think with ninety percent there, I think just showing you what your conditions are, what you've done. Uh, Commissioner Terry and I worked hard to get us to this point. I think over thirty days, you all should have some, uh, more insight on where you're going. So, Mr. Buckley, so just reach out, and you all have a meeting and connect with them on the conditions, 'cause a lot of them were just done the last two days. So I want the community to see what, what's all in the, uh, conditions.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
All right, we've got a proper motion for a thirty-day deferral with proper second. Uh, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, seven zero in the affirmative for the thirty-day deferral. And, uh, thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Buckley, for your team being here tonight. Uh, moving on to agenda item, N eight, which is twenty twenty-two fourteen seventy-six. This is before Commission Districts Two and Super District Six. Application of N D M Edens LLC care of, uh, Dennis J. Webb, Jr. to rezone property from C one, local commercial, to MU four, mixed-use four, to allow mixed retail office and residential development for the grocery store, movie theater at, uh, twenty fifty Lawrenceville Highway. And, uh, who will be speaking for us on this one? Mr. White or Ms. Bag, Ms. Bragg?
It'll be me, sir.
Okay.
Okay, let's start here. Here is the current zoning map, uh, the subject property outlined in black. Uh, it's currently occupied, uh, by North DeKalb Mall. Uh, as most people know, the mall was constructed, uh, in the nineteen sixties. Uh, currently, it's gone through, uh, steady decline over the past few decades. Uh, and so right now, most of the mall is vacant, uh, with the exception of a few, uh, remaining, uh, retail uses and, uh, postal service use, uh, a few others. This property is currently zoned C one. Uh, so this proposal, uh, is to rezone the property, uh, to MU four, which is one of our mixed-use, uh, districts. It is the future land use map. Uh, the subject property is located, uh, in Town Center Character Area. Uh, it serves as the core of this particular character area. As you can see, everything in the purple color is located in the Town Center designation. Uh, is an area of the site. Uh, here is the proposed, uh, site plans. The applicant is proposing to, uh, redevelop the site, uh, with a maximum of three hundred and twenty square feet of, uh, commercial use, uh, including, uh, retaining the existing AMC Movie Theater and the existing, uh, Marshall's, uh, Clothing Store. Additionally, the proposal includes a maximum of seventeen hundred multifamily, uh, residential units, uh, up to one hundred townhomes, uh, here along the western side, uh, and northwest side of the site. Uh, will also contain up to one hundred eighty thousand square feet, uh, of office space, uh, and up to a hundred and fifty, uh, hotel rooms through the site. Uh, also as part of this proposal, uh, is, uh, improved pedestrian facilities, uh, particularly of note, uh, most notable, uh, is here along the south, uh, in the west of the subject property coming into the center here, will be a trail, uh, network that will, uh, align with, uh, internal, uh, pedestrian access, uh, and additional multi-use pathways, uh, that will, uh, meander throughout the site, uh, provide for additional, uh, recreational activity in addition to, uh, pedestrian access to, uh, the various retail and commercial, uh, and residential uses on site. Uh, also note, this is space designated for a potential grocery store, uh, tenant here in the northeastern side, uh, of the subject property, uh, parking, uh, throughout the site will be the combination of surface parking, uh, and, uh, parking decks, uh, and then obviously the town home units, uh, will have, uh, ground-level garages in there. Uh, also in the development, it will contain, uh, a few parks designated for open space here. So there's the Promenade, uh, Park here along the west, uh, Wild Honey here in the southwestern portion of the site. Uh, and I think the main feature, uh, Lemon Park, uh, here in the center, uh, and it will be designated for a variety of different special event activities, uh, outdoor dining, and other passive, uh, recreation activities. Uh, so, the proposal aligns with our Town Center Character Area goals from the comprehensive plan, uh, for mixed-use development, uh, for transition to, uh, a more pedestrian-friendly environment, uh, a less auto-centric, uh, setup compared to the suburban development that has occurred, uh, in the past. Uh, so it aligns with a number of our land use goals from the comprehensive plan, uh, and the zoning ordinance. Uh, additionally, a D R I study was conducted by the Atlanta Regional Commission, uh, regarding this proposal, uh, and they have issued an approval, uh, for this request, uh, as well. Uh, so with that, staff recommends, uh, approval of this request. Uh, you all have received the substitute packet, uh, with an updated staff report, uh, and updated conditions, uh, that we worked hard on, joint effort between the applicant, uh, the applicable commissioners, uh, with Commissioner Rader, uh, Commissioner Terry, uh, their respective staffs and the applicant staff, uh, and planning staff over a number of weeks. So we, uh, we grinded through this to, uh, prepare the substitute in time, uh, for today's meeting. And so with that, staff recommends, uh, approval and substitute conditions.
All right, Mr. White, thank you very much. I see, uh, gentlemen from Smith Gambrell and Russell. I'm assuming that, uh, you're here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Aye, and this is Din Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, three oh three oh nine. Here on behalf of Edens. Before I begin, let me introduce Herbert Ames. Herbert is a senior vice president with Edens and heads the regional office based here in Atlanta. I'd also like to acknowledge, uh, Jim McKinney, who's a vice president of construction. He's on the Zoom call as well. Uh, both Herbert and Jim are ready and willing to take your questions. I think Brandon's gonna drive my presentation. Yeah, Brandon, if you go to page two, uh, I'll tell you a little bit about Edens. Edens is a premier developer owner and operator of retail and mixed-use centers. It owns about a hundred and ten properties uh, around the country. And as I mentioned, it's got a regional office here in Atlanta. It's got, uh, eleven properties in the metro area now, including part of Toko Hills, as well as the Whole Foods anchored, uh, retail center on West, West Paces Ferry Road, right in the heart of Buckhead. You, you'll go to slide three. This is a property everybody knows, um, North Cab Mall's in the southwest quadrant of Northwood Hills Road, Lawrenceville Highway. This site is about seventy-three point one acres, and it includes that eighteen acres of green space that, uh, Mr. White just mentioned. It's to the west of the property. The site's zone C one, and as you heard, uh, the mall portion of this property shows as Town Center on the future land use map, and the green space to the west shows is conservation open space. That mall building you see is six hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet, but as Mr. White mentioned, and I think as most of you know now, that mall is largely vacant, is in decline, and has been in decline for a very long time. We've been working on this project for many, many, many months, uh, and during that time, we've met with staff, including Mr. White and others, uh, your elected officials, particularly, uh, Commissioners Terry and, and Rader. We've met with outside consultants DeKalb hired. Uh, they brought in a number of consultants, including the architecture firm Perkins and Will. We've been meeting with neighborhood stakeholders, which includes a cross neighborhoods committee, which consists of ten or twelve heads of the neighborhoods that surround that mall property. And as you heard, we went through the D R I process, so A R C and Greta were also part of this, this particular development consideration. All of these people, all of these entities inform the site plan that I'm about to show you and the seventeen pages of condition, uh, that Mr. White just, uh, just mentioned. We certainly appreciate everyone's input. There's been an incredible amount of time put into, uh, this particular project. What you see here is a slide from the comp plan, and that's really where we started this process. We went to that document, and it's, that document is particularly important to me because that comp plan, uh, uh, criteria were, were really created by the community, and they stated the vision for this property. And that vision was a mixed-use community with all those attributes that you see on the screen in front of you, and we think we tick every box here. If you'll go to the next page, I'll take you through the site plan. I've got a little bit of greener version here, uh, which I think, uh, better highlights what we're talking about. But, you know, effectively, this development, uh, is centered around a network of streets. There are two primary streets that run, uh, east-west and north-south. The east-west road is Road A. It basically bisects almost the middle of the property. And Road B runs north-south, again, almost through the middle of the property. But this development is divided into blocks, uh, based upon this grid network, uh, numbered A through G, and I'll just kind of quickly walk you through those. Where the cursor is now is Block A. It's up in the northeast corner. As you heard, this proposed a, 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 a grocery store potentially, or another retail tenant. There are four, uh, smaller, uh, streetfront walk-up retail buildings proposed in Block A, as well as a residential structure on the western side. Uh, that building will have ground floor retail and structured parking. Block B is just to the south. Uh, you'll notice, uh, a purple building up there in the corner of Lawrenceville Highway. There are actually three of those purple buildings a- around the site, and they all are designated office and hotel. The idea is that those three purple areas are interchangeable, but ultimately, the site will have one hotel and two office buildings. But ultimately, the site will have one hotel and two office buildings on one of those three purple locations. Block B also has a a a residential structure as well that you see outlined in gray. Uh, that that building will have again, street front retail and structured parking. Block C is to the west of it, it's the area in pink. That's where we're reusing a portion of the existing mall. AMC and Marshall still have lease terms, so we have to accommodate them. But for that portion of the mall, we're creating new access, we're renovating that that space and we're incorporating it into the larger development scheme. That block also uh contains Lemon Park that Mr. White uh mentioned. That is a focal point and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Block B is just to the north. That includes three residential structures, all of which have a structured parking. And there is some ground floor retail that I'll again highlight here in a minute. Block E is is on the western boundary. I don't know what that uh that pink comment mark is, but underneath it uh there are a a a row of townhomes that basically affront the western portion of the site. There we go, thank you. Uh, you know, those were very intentional. We had meetings again with the community very early on and uh the community wanted a a transition in both height and use. As you move away from the more intense uh center of the site to the west as you and transitioned into the neighborhoods there. So the townhomes were intentionally placed there to create that transition. Block F is just to the north and the northwest corner. We're showing that as townhomes now, but that's really intended to be a flexible area. Uh, as we've talked a little bit about tonight, there's some expectation that that corridor along North Druid Hills Road will transition. And we want to be able to have some flexibility to 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 meet that transition, respond to it. Lastly, we've got the green space on the western side that I've mentioned a couple of times. Again, I'll come back to that in a minute. In summary, we've got heights on this property from one story to eight stories. And we concentrated all of the significant height really in the middle of the site or in Lawrenceville Highway. The total density is eighteen hundred residential units and at least a hundred of those will be townhomes. As you heard, we're proposing three hundred twenty thousand square feet of uh retail space. That includes the portion of the mall we're keeping. We're proposing a hundred and fifty room hotel and a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of office. Uh, the plan that uh Brandon has up there is is our retail activation plan. You'll notice those areas that are in dark red. That's street front walk-up retail. So that's the restaurants, the boutiques, uh, you know, the dentist's office that you'll be able to actually walk past uh on a sidewalk and interdirectly from the sidewalk. If you'll turn to the next slide, Brandon, uh, it it highlights the green space proposed for this property. Again, the darker green areas are more formal uh green spaces. Uh, Brandon highlighted Wild Honey Park, which you see on the uh sort of the right there on the western side of the property to the north of it is Promenade Park. Uh, and the lighter green areas that you see internal to the property are also green spaces, but they're more in in line with plazas and less formal uh green on the property. Let me come back to the the path that Brandon mentioned on the western side of the site. The Path Foundation has plans in conjunction with the cab to come through uh, you know, this area. And we have provided uh a twenty five foot easement area at their discretion uh to to actually allow it to pass through this site and come down uh, you know, to Lawrenceville Highway. We've also brought that path through the property. And if you go up to uh the 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 that part there, Promenade Park, you'll notice that the path actually comes into the property, uh, travels up Joshua Tree Road, uh, up road B and ultimately to Mistletoe and North Druid Hills Road. So we're not only bringing the path past the site, we're actually accommodating it internal with the property too. The next slides that I have are really just renderings of 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 what we're proposing. Uh, I want to just quickly touch these. This shows an aerial Lemon Park that I've mentioned. This is the focal point of the site. It will have hardscape, softscape, green space. Uh, it also has a curvaceous street section so that if there were a large event, for example, let's say the Braves or when the Braves go back to the World Series, we could put a screen out there, shut the road down and accommodate a big crowd. If you'll keep looking through, Brandon. Just more views. Uh, you'll see there and that that's a close up of where the path comes into the site there that I mentioned. I'm not going to get into the conditions too much. They total seventeen pages again, they're exhaustive. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'll just note that we have made a commitment to provide affordable and workforce housing on this property. We've made a commitment to provide a retail incubator. We've made a commitment to keep the community garden. Those who know that area know that's an important component of the community now. It'll be there and we're actually committing to improve it with financially and with some work that we're going to self perform. The D R I uh study required some improvements to the roadway network. We're going to fund those and of course, as I mentioned, we've also committed to the Path Foundation. So this project's an eight to ten year uh phased build out. Edens is going to own and operate it long term. You know, we're here tonight to get the zoning designation we need uh to allow that reality to uh to take place. And I think as you'll hear or or may have already heard, the staff has recommended approval and so did the planning commission. And by the way, no one spoke in opposition to the planning commission. That's a first for a project of this size. So uh, we hope we have your support tonight and I'm going to stop because I think there's some folks who want to speak uh in support behind me. Thank you.
Mr. Metalski, we could yeah, for one quick second.
Right, I did ask him to unmute again, my apologies. I have sent them the invite to unmute.
I I promise that I would say that we agree to the conditions that are before you tonight as well as the exhibits attached to those conditions. So thank you, that's a lot.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Metalski, with an eye on the time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the floor uh to uh anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
If you'd like to speak in support, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you're on a phone. Our first request is from Teresa Same or Same. I will ask them to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and ad address for the record.
Hi, uh, my name's Teresa Same and I'm at two five seven two McCurdy Way, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three three. Um, I am the zoning chair for the Medlock Area Neighborhood Association and the chair of the Cross Neighborhoods Council. The DeKalb Cross Neighborhoods Council is a coalition of community volunteers representing neighborhood interests with developers concern concerning commercial and residential development in and around our central DeKalb neighborhoods. Our alliance aims to ensure that the outcome of local economic development will bring measurable improvements that benefit nearby residents and reflect good policy practices. Most importantly, we strive to give the community a voice in the development process. Representation on the DeKalb Cross Neighborhoods Council is fluid, based primarily on the proximity to the development. The team working on on with Edens on the North DeKalb Mall proposal includes representation from Claremont Heights Civic Association, Clyde Shepherd Nature Preserve, Druid Lake Homeowners Association, Good Growth DeKalb, the Greater Valley Brook Civic Association, Laurel Ridge Shamrock Civic Association, Lynn Moore Woods Civic Association, Medlock Area Neighborhood Association with representatives um from Tuxworth Springs condominium association and North Druid Valley Homeowners Association. The Cross Neighborhoods Council and Edens began meeting on North DeKalb Mall redevelopment almost a year ago. Since then, we have met several times and exchanged countless emails. On February twenty second, the redevelopment plan was presented to the community in an open Zoom meeting. The meeting was advertised extensively amongst our neighborhood groups. As part of this process, we compiled and considered all feedback received from the community and provided that feedback to Edens as well as Commissioners Raider and Terry. For many of us, this is the fourth go around on the redevelopment of this property. Getting to where we are today has been a monumental collective effort on the part of the Edens team, Commissioners Raider and Terry, as well as their staff, the planning department and the community. We commend Edens for their willingness to work and rework their plan to satisfy numerous stakeholders. The Cross Neighborhoods Council supports Edens rezoning application along with the seventeen pages of agreed upon conditions and numerous supporting exhibits. We appreciate the opportunity to be part of this collaborative process. Thank you to our commissioners, the planning department and Edens for understanding the importance of this development on the future of our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Teresa. Just want to note, I got received a message from the clerk. We're down to about five and a half minutes for public speaking. And Mr. Metalski, if you'd let our other two uh hands raised to uh make their comments.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, the next request is Helena Pashon and apologize if I mispronounced that. Please uh feel free to unmute and if you'd like to start your video, you may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. Helena Pachon, one one eight four Druid Walk. Um, in support because um the path trail is potentially really exciting as a way to enable travel to my work, my place of employment, which is Emory University. And linked to that, two requests, and and that is uh to be able to maintain parking, a parking option. Uh, for those of us who do live in the neighborhood and want to be able to commute to Emory using the free shuttle that currently exists between Clifton Road and uh the North DeKalb Mall. And then the second request is that the north side of North Druid Hills does not have a sidewalk between Birch Road and Druid Walk. And while this is outside of the scope of this development, it would allow those of us on that part of the neighborhood to be able to safely access um the new development. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Let me, our next request is from Mary Shellman. I'll ask Mary to unmute. Uh, she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record. Oops, I'm sorry, I asked you to unmute one more time, my apologies.
I got it.
There you go.
Um, I'm Mary Shellman. I live at twenty four nineteen Harrington Drive in Decatur. I live in the Medlock neighborhood, which is adjacent to the mall redevelopment. And I represent Good Growth DeKalb on the DeKalb Cross Neighborhoods Council. We've been meeting with the Edens over with this about this development for about a year. Um, Edens has listened to our concerns from the beginning and been open to many of our suggestions. One of our primary concerns was navigation throughout the site as well as connectivity to each of the surrounding neighborhoods. By working with the commissioners, the county and the path foundation and including the floodplain land as a resource for the path, our concerns have been met and sometimes exceeded. I was happy to see the addition of the townhome options of stubbing in for the accessory dwelling units and including infrastructure to allow future elevator installation to increase access in the townhomes. I appreciate the Edens voluntary allocation of ten percent of the apartments to be used for affordable and workforce housing. I applaud the priority Edens will give to qualifying individuals who work at the mall and their commitment to follow through on the process of eligibility. I am relieved to know that they will be going through the Department of Community Development for verification of compliance. While this indicates a welcome engagement at the county level, it is disconcerting that DeKalb County still does not have an inclusionary housing plan in place. As part of an overarching plan, we believe DeKalb County should require developers to include up to twenty percent of enforceable workforce and affordable housing in all housing developments. We can't continue to rely on persuasion and the goodwill of developers like Edens. We urge you commissioners to prioritize adoption of an inclusionary housing plan for DeKalb County. The mall redevelopment has been a huge project and Edens has shown their willingness to work with the neighborhoods while simultaneously working with commissioners, consultants and the planning department. Their fortitude and that of all the parties is commendable. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. And that does exhaust the time and it appears that all the hands uh have been accommodated. So back to you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metalski. Um, uh, I believe we also need to open the floor up for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application.
Indeed, if you're in opposition, please uh do pound two or use the raise hand feature. And our first request is Carol Hayes. I'll ask Carol to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Carol Hayes. I live at two six six five Spicer Lane, Decatur, Georgia. I'm in the Laurel Ridge Amark neighborhood directly across from this development. And I'm worried that we're going to run out of time and we don't have enough time for all of us to be able to speak in opposition. But my biggest concern is that the Atlanta Regional Commission said that there will be fifteen thousand new vehicle daily car trips related to this development, that the density was based on seventy four acres and yet eighteen acres of that are floodplain, which means that there are three buildings that are listed as being seven and eight stories tall that are directly across the street from our neighborhood. Lawrenceville Highway is currently only one lane headed south in front of this mall. The um hotel and office space, although there were three different sections that were listed, all of them are listed as being eight stories tall. Our neighborhood cannot handle the seventeen hundred apartments and the one hundred townhomes that are proposed here. I beg of you to please put a condition on this, that the stories for these apartments are not seven and eight stories tall, that they are left with less individuals and less cars on this densely populated neighborhood that we already live in with the traffic on North Druid Hills being, I mean, how many times have we been here talking about the traffic related to the silly Chick-fil-A? But now we're talking about this gigantic development, which is going to have even more cars. So I yield my time now to the Reverend John and S. Benny.
And thank you for your comments. Uh, our next request is from Mr. Stephen Benny. I will ask him to unmute if he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Uh, Stephen Benny, ten eighty three Seville Drive, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. I would have to agree with the uh eighteen hundred uh new abodes plus a hundred and fifty hotel rooms. There's almost two thousand um new people in that area and the traffic is pretty darn bad. Uh, also, uh, Orion Drive is the only left-hand turn entrance into the facility at this particular time coming up Lawrenceville Highway. And it looks like the development is in ten years is is looking to be an A number one type spot for people to go to. And I'm worried about access. I am also worried about the affordable housing there. I thought that at the planning commission, I heard that fifteen homes were going to be affordable and that the rest of the ten percent were going to be work. Less than one percent of the proposed building uh rooms or whatever apartments or affordable housing is not the kind of standard that I think that DeKalb County should be setting. Now, I could be wrong on that number, but that was what I thought I heard. Also, I think it boiled also, I want to talk about MARTA access. Currently, there are two buses which go to North DeKalb Mall from uh the Decatur Station, one from the Avon Hill Station. One of these buses runs every forty five minutes. The other one runs every sixty minutes. If this is going to be a place to go to, I would request that Eden perhaps talk to MARTA about having a little bit more access or else providing their own bus access. Because currently MARTA is not going to be able to provide the access that people want to that area. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for your comments. Our next uh request is from Reverend John Wirral. I'll ask him to unmute if he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Reverend John Wirral. I live at two five oh seven Wilson Woods Drive, Decatur, Georgia. That's just across North Druid Hills from from the development. I spoke earlier about the Chick-fil-A uh matter and we were concerned about traffic there and um specifically concerned about how traffic in and out of Birch Road affects the entrance into our neighborhood. It pretty much makes it impossible to get into our neighborhood on the on the primary on the on the primary location where we're supposed to go in and out, which is North Druid Woods. Something needs to be done in this plan to consider traffic on North Druid Hills and in particular, how it's going to be affected um with the offsets of North Druid Woods and Birch Road. Not to mention the fact that a as he as Mr. Benny said, um, Bryan Road is the is the only entrance um on on um for for turning left onto onto it from Lawrenceville Highway. And it's only a single lane on Lawrenceville Highway. I don't think our infrastructure is is ready. Is is ready for the for the kind of impact. We're going to have fifteen thousand more visits a day is an enormous number of cars. Um, we have nine hundred homes in our neighborhood and we're we're talking about double that number going across the street. Um, it's not that I don't want new neighbors and it's not that I don't think higher density housing is necessary as we as we build toward the future, in particular for environmental reasons. But this proposal doesn't doesn't have um, that doesn't doesn't make it clear how MARTA is to be connected or how mass transit in general is to be connected to it. It doesn't um explain um or address the issue. And I and I do think that probably this hasn't been addressed because the Chick-fil-A proposal was was earlier in time and wasn't resolved until this year, at least wasn't withdrawn until this evening. Um, I do hope that something will be done to address that area and perhaps Edens is interested in that area. I hope Edens is interested in in that. I hope Edens is interested in, in that entrance because it's going to be a mess if it doesn't get addressed. There are many really great aspects of this proposal. And I think our entire neighborhood is excited about this development. We just hope that, that it doesn't end up just being a focus on that particular area alone without realizing that the, the streets and the traffic just outside of that area is going to change dramatically. Because, I mean, even if you only have 2.5 people per home in those 1,800 homes, that's 4,500 new, new neighbors. And that's going to change things for schools. It's going to change things for, for traffic, among other things. And so we hope those, those roads and the entrance, the ingress and egress can be addressed. We hope some of the problems moving up and down North Druid Hills and, and up and down Lawrenceville Highway can be addressed. We are looking forward to, to seeing it redeveloped. And want to say thanks for all the ways that the, that Edens has already addressed lots of issues and engaged the neighbors. We just hope that there can be a few more things engaged, and we would, we would ask that those be addressed before this is approved.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next request is Michael on an iPhone. I will ask him to unmute if he'd like to start his video, he may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, my name is Michael Pisani, 2756 Mount Olive Drive. And I'd just like to echo John's basic sentiment right there. My major concerns with this, although I'm very happy with most of the Edens plan, I worry about the traffic and the density. I, I know you guys are working really hard on both sides to get it right. I hope the commissioners and the county and the planning commission really do their homework on their, what can be acceptable with the amount of density of, of people living across the street there and the impact on the traffic and the impact on the roads around us. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. That does exhaust our current hands raiser, so I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Matelski. Let's go ahead and have Mr. Dan Webb come on back up in case he wants to make a rebuttal or make any additional statements.
One moment, inviting them back.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, yeah, I'll, I'll make this brief. You know, this is a project that literally has touched thousands of people, and I'm disappointed that we have any opposition, even if it's just the five people who spoke tonight. Although that opposition seemed somewhat tempered. But as you've already heard tonight, as I'm sure you've heard in the days and weeks leading up to this hearing, this project has overwhelming support from the people who live out in that area, from the staff, from the government agencies that reviewed this application, including ARC and Greta. Everyone has done their homework on this application. There is no impact that has not been considered and is not addressed in the 17 pages of conditions that we referred to. Specifically, we've heard comments about height, density, and traffic. Those were all exhaustively looked into, number one, by ARC and Greta. You know, their report actually considered those issues and recommended approval. It was certainly considered by staff and the various agencies at the cab who again recommended approval of this application. You know, touching on density, the total density on the site is 28 units an acre. That's actually relatively small in the big scheme of things. And this development is again, as I mentioned before, phased in over 78 years. So people will be coming to the site gradually and over time. As to traffic impacts, you know, if you've read the conditions, you note that ARC required three traffic improvements to the network around the site. We agreed to fund or self-perform all of those. So things should get better, or at a minimum, we're going to minimize and mitigate our impact. Touching on some other issues raised, parking and access to every shuttle, that's an issue we're working on. MARTA access, there actually is a condition that requires us to work with MARTA to provide a better onsite.
I spoke. Oh shit.
Please go ahead, Dan.
So we are, we, we, we've committed in the conditions to work with MARTA, improve the existing bus stop and maybe find some others, as well as provide sidewalk access from the bus stop into the site. There was a comment made about sidewalks on, on the, on the north side of North Druid Hills Road. Obviously, that's off our site. But I want to mention one thing. There's a tax allocation district being proposed for this area that is going to follow this rezoning request. That TAD would not be possible without this redevelopment. And that TAD will provide funding for a lot of improvements, including additional sidewalks in the area and including on north side of North Druid Hills Road. So again, oh, last thing, workforce housing. So we've committed to provide affordable and workforce housing in amount to 10% of the units provided on the site. That's about 170 affordable workforce housing units. Three per building will be affordable, defined as 60% or less AMI. The remaining will be workforce at 60 to 120% of AMI. Those are significant numbers, and the important point here is we're asking for nothing in exchange for them. Typically, decide the cab comes in and provides a tax abatement or some financial incentive for folks to provide affordable workforce housing, and we're asking for nothing here. So this is a significant contribution in numbers and certainly a significant contribution financially. So again, you know, we've been doing our homework. I know the folks who've been involved in this process from the beginning at, at the county level and above certainly know that fact. And we don't believe that there are any impacts that have not been considered or addressed. So we're step by step ready to move forward, and we hope you agree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. With that, I'll ask Mr. White to come back and reiterate their recommend, his recommendation for the evening.
Approval with substitute conditions.
Right. And just so that we're clear, this is Agenda Item 20221476 within Commission Districts Two and Six. And at this point, I will ask for a motion, and I note that we have a commissioner that has raised his hand as well.
All right. I want to move to approve this petition with the 17 pages of conditions dated May 26. And if I can get a second, I have a comment.
Right. Is there a second?
Second, and also I have a comment.
All right. So a proper motion, second.
Yeah, if I could just continue my train of thought. First, a question. Mr. Webb, you talked about the details. I was looking in the most recent conditions for the stipulation for the sidewalk to connect to the Lawrenceville Highway bus stop. Can you just, I couldn't find it. So I see the bus stop condition, but I don't see the sidewalk.
It's the last sentence in 7B, excuse me, yeah, 7B. So it says, well, the entire condition reads, "The developer will work with MARTA to develop the best design and locations for a bus transit stop on Sweetbrier Road and along Lawrenceville Highway. The design shall include consideration of the need for pull-over lanes and shelters. Such obligations shall be completed prior to issuance of the initial lane disturbance permit. Further, a sidewalk shall be constructed, constructed connecting the bus stop and Lawrenceville Highway to the development."
Okay, so, so what, I guess I have a version that does not include that sentence. So how should I, how should I identify the, the latest set of those conditions?
Well, it should be in what's attached to the staff report, but, but I'll tell you, the easiest way to do it is just to read that sentence into the record and ask that it be added as the last sentence of 7B.
Well, I do also if staff can confirm that that sentence is where you said that it was in the, in the conditions that they have as the staff conditions.
It starts on the first line on page 11.
Yeah, Mr. White, can you do that?
Yes, sir. Hold it up. Here it is.
Yeah, there it is.
Yep, there it is. Okay. So these are the conditions that are on the screen that I am attaching to this approval. And then further, I'd just like to first thank the community. Without their vision and without their patience and persistence, this development would not occur within District Two and within this very. This site is, you know, has been the sleeper site in District Two for many years. And to the credit of the community, they have waited for the development that they believed that the site deserved. And this is that development. I do think that there are a wide variety of other features that others may talk about, including a sustainability plan. There is a fully elaborated multi-use trail system throughout the project that has eight to 10-foot multi-use paths that are set within linear parks to provide active recreation to residents of the site, as well as residents of throughout the community, to make the area fully accessible and really a delight, I think, for people all over Decab to walk in and to arrive at through the multi-use trail system that we will have to access the site. There, the details have really been sweated on this issue, right down to the sidewalks to access the bike, the, the bus stops. And, you know, other features, including the incubator project, which we really didn't discuss much, but it will give startup businesses an opportunity to operate within a high-quality retail environment and to perfect their business plans before moving into market rate space and allow us to amplify the local character of business within this center, within our community. Moreover, the affordable housing is been matched to an estimate of the individuals who might work here and the, the ranges of, of wage that they would be able to earn at the site. And a large majority of the people expected to work on this site will be able to live on this site within guidelines for housing affordability. We do want to see more affordable housing on the site. And there is a provision in the conditions that allows the development of micro-units, which are small square foot units that can be integrated into both the multifamily as well as the townhouse development that will give yet another housing option on the site. The Board of Commissioners will have to detail out a section of the code that regulates micro-units. But we did want to make them a, an enabled use on the site in the conditions thus state. We have worked very hard to have a full hierarchy of open space in this project from the passive naturalized open space in the South Peachtree Creek floodplain, which will be contiguous to. And we hope will be integrated into the Clyde Shepherd Nature Preserve and forever protect that river bottom forest in that area. Also, open space that is dedicated to food production through substantial improvements to the community garden that include the collection of rainwater for irrigation, provision of, you know, vehicular access down into that lower area so that farmers and gardeners can move materials down there with, you know, back of a pickup truck or something like that, as well as a contribution to the improvement of the soils and the, the garden plots in the area. The improvements to the infrastructure are likewise going to be important. There will be three intersections on North Druid Hills Road that will be upgraded in order to help to accommodate this project. And then also the intersection of Orion Drive and Lawrenceville Highway. And we have funded by the Atlanta Regional Commission, a corridor study for North Druid Hills Road all the way from I-85 through Valley Brook Drive to, to East Ponce de Leon Avenue, where we're going to be looking at that whole corridor, seeking to make it safer for those that live in the neighborhoods and need to make turns. And also to help to remove impedances to the smooth flow of traffic through that area so that it can handle the, the, the increased traffic, not only from this project, but probably more significantly from the new hospitals that are opening at I-85 and North Druid Hills Road, which will be the larger traffic generators. And one of the big reasons that we believe that more housing is important in this area is because of the density of jobs that are nearby and the desire to try to reduce the distances of commutes and to make more feasible shuttles and other alternative means of transportation to take residents of this development to places like the new Briar Hills Medical District, where Choa is building their hospital. Emory is building professional offices, and then down Scott Boulevard to the Clifton Corridor and the Centers for Disease Control. This project, I would safely say, is not entirely perfect. We still hope to see the site further evolve in the future. And I'm glad to hear that some of the elements may be flexible because over time, we would like to rely more and more on alternative modes and try to eliminate the amount of space and capital that are developed to accommodating automobiles. But this is a generational project. It won't be built in 18 months. It will take at least 10 years in order to see this built out. We've staged it so that there is a threshold past which residential development cannot occur unless the commercial and employment space development is built in advance of that so that we don't end up just with the residential element and then never see the development of the other workplace and, and marketplace type of activities there. Having said that, I think that this will give us a new town green and center place in Decab. I hope that it is not called North Decab Anything. Because if there is anything that is inaccurate about this particular location is that it is in a far reach of North Decab County. It is really among the most central places in the county, not only from a physical location, but also with its point of access at the intersection of Stone Mountain Freeway and I-285. It should be amenity for all in Decab, and I'm really looking forward for it to become a meeting place to everyone. So again, thanks to everybody for working on this. I'm looking forward to see work begin as soon as possible on the project.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Rader. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. And first off, I want to appreciate Commissioner Rader. It was, I think, his vision to really bring in additional, you know, support, whether planning consultants, market researchers, you know, working with Georgia Tech University on the design studio at North Decab Mall, that really, I think, you know, helped lay the, the groundwork for the must-haves. And then through the community work, which really, I think, begun, you know, it seems like almost a year ago at this point. And we heard from some of the neighborhood leaders who, I think, have been really instrumental in shaping the direction of this project. Because I think in a lot of ways, as, as we have all experienced here on zoning, this is that, you know, it's a, it's a very political thing, but politics is the art of the possible. And, and what's possible, you know, then becomes reality. And so, you know, I think what we've done over the last, I guess, maybe 10 months now, I think, is craft something that I believe is actually going to be a tremendously beneficial project for Decab County. Now, Commissioner Rader did point out that this is something that will take 10 years to build out, and we have certain mechanisms and the conditions, I think, that really guide this development in, in a smart and responsible way. I want to go back real quickly to the design studio because the, the Professor Ellen Dunham Jones, I think a lot of y'all have seen some of the presentations from her cohort of students, master students at the College of Architecture and Urban Design at Georgia Tech. She's a, a world famous architect. She keeps the largest list of dead and dying malls and has even written a book called Retrofitting Suburbia that really asks that question of how do we make suburban life that developed in one way? But through this community engagement and community feedback, we're finding that it has a lot of downsides, mostly through traffic, disconnectedness, um, hard to create a sense of community, uh, by virtue of everyone being spread out. And so I think what, you know, we have here, um, is really building on that concept of how do we take these huge pieces of land, and this North DeKalb Mall site is a huge piece of land that, in essence, you know, used to have a, a stream running through it and was clear cut, paved over, graded, and it's been a, a blacktop, uh, for 60 years. Um, and you see a lot of that design all over DeKalb County because we developed in this, in the age of suburbia. And now we're having to try to figure out how do we manage growth, make things affordable, but also respond to the demands of our constituents that are saying that we want good, uh, infrastructure and good walking and biking facilities and parks, and we want to see restaurants and shops and open spaces and places for people to gather. And so I think this is, you know, a lot of where, um, we're going. I think what we've ultimately come down to with, uh, so much of the, the community's input. On the affordable housing piece, I think the important thing to, to, to remember and to, to acknowledge is that this is not be, this affordable housing piece, this 10% carve-out is not being done through a financing mechanism or a tax abatement, which, you know, if you, a lot of those things you read about in the news, a lot of them involve tax abatement. And what does that simply mean? It means the government gets less taxes, so there can be affordable housing. It's, it's an equation that has to go one way or the other, but sometimes that treatment makes sense. Ideally, however, the goal is for permanent affordable housing. We don't want 10-year sunsets when tax abatement financing runs out. We want conditions of zoning that create permanent affordable housing, and that's what this does. I think that's really important. As Commissioner Rader pointed out, the micro units, um, this is a concept that we're going to keep talking about because earlier today we were talking with Grady, and there's a nursing shortage right now. And they're asking for $12 million to help address the nursing shortage. The nursing shortage and the, whether it's COVID or it's because of an aging population has put strain on the entire healthcare system. It's putting a lot of strain on our families. And a lot of families are asking the question of, what do I do with an aging parent? Do I have them come and live at home? Do we find a place for them to live, or do we just hope that where they're at now is going to work out? And one of the most popular, and I've never had anyone tell me this was a bad idea, but when there's opportunities for parents to live at home that have some semblance of independence, it's just a, you know, a stage of life where there just needs a little bit, a little bit more closeness to the family. That is a preferred option, especially when you can do it in an area that's walkable and bikeable and has all of those aspects of community building, which are so important to addressing what, uh, I think public health experts have acknowledged is a loneliness epidemic in addition to the other, uh, COVID pandemic. And so the opportunity for micro units, um, in some of these residential developments, if I think the commission, you know, moves forward on developing a, a more clear definition of a micro unit, creates the opportunity for a lot of future residents at the site to have aging parents or loved ones, um, live with them, um, and, and do so, I think, in a, uh, a, a sustainable way. Commissioner Rader pointed out the, the tax allocation districts. I think this is a really important mechanism that I, I think that we should be looking at really in every activity center in DeKalb County, because a lot of the activity centers reflect something very similar. It's a suburban makeup. It's a low-density commercial, C1, C2. And yet the neighborhoods have been asking for years, we want sidewalks to the grocery stores, we want more parks, we want more public gathering spaces. And so the, the, the concept of this site developing over 10 years of there being a capture of some of the tax revenues to build out the infrastructure into every single neighborhood that surrounds this development, that as the growth increases, the development and the connections to the neighborhoods increase concurrently. And so the walking and biking routes in this area really are just the very, and just sort of the, the, the staggered growth of this is exactly what you want. It's smart, it's responsible, and it allows for the opportunity for things to catch up, particularly with the North Druid Hills study area, uh, more work happening at the, um, Valley Brook, uh, 285 Lawrenceville Highway section, um, as well as, um, potential future, um, Bus Rapid Transit connect. We didn't mention that's, that the townhomes are going to be solar and EV-ready, um, as well as, uh, um, additional 20% EV-ready infrastructure in the parking deck. It's a very important aspect because seeing more EVs. Uh, we know there's, in the conditions, there's bioswales and bio-retention facilities. This is very important because it's been a blacktop and a, a pipe just right into the creek there for 60-plus years. This is going to allow for greater capture, treating for quality and quantity. Commissioner Rader mentioned the investment in the community farm. That's a very important thing that we heard from residents, um, and certainly the, the farmers that use it. And so it's exciting that that's going to continue and there's going to be improvements made. And the last point I'll make, Mr. Presiding Officer, sorry for filibustering here. We've worked on this case for a long time, so I really appreciate everyone's patience and time over these, these last many, many months. But I would just, the, the final piece here, which I really think is the most important piece, is that we're creating an area that 60 years ago, the North DeKalb Mall was the place to be when you were growing up in this area of DeKalb. And sometimes anywhere in DeKalb, people came here. There's, was a riches. There's been a movie theater there for many, many years. Uh, people, uh, it was a place for people to gather. And I think, and I hope what's going to happen over the next 10 years and over the next 60 years is that the, the most valuable piece of what we're doing here is we're creating, um, a public realm, a sense of place and a place for people and community, uh, to gather, for, for things to happen. And when we create the space for community to happen, the possibilities are endless. So I appreciate the support of the community members, support of the applicants and developers working really hard to, uh, make, uh, the best possible projects for this site, and I look forward to, uh, supporting it here, um, tonight. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Next, I want to acknowledge the hands of, uh, Commissioner Larry Johnson, as well as Commissioner Maria Davis Johnson.
Yes, uh, quickly, I just heard it from Commissioner Terry. Just want to make sure that I heard it correctly, and this is a great project. A couple of years ago, I worked with Charlie Hayden, who owned a property in North DeKalb Mall, and we worked with the Refugee Resettlement Site because of, uh, the Bud, the Budneese population, uh, which is more agrarian, wanted a place to farm, and they gave them the space right there where Subaru, Subaru is, which was a, I guess, a floodplain. Will that be at that site or will, Mr. Webb, would you all be moving that and will that population still be able to farm? Or would you just open it up for everybody? That's a quick question.
Well, the community garden that's there today will stay and Eden System committed to providing some funding for it and making some improvements that Commissioner Rader touched upon, so it, it's going to stay where it is.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson, Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Yeah, I think I, I got my, my, uh, question answered, and I think it's such a great, uh, project. And, um, you know, since I have a mic, I say, uh, please consider, uh, also, uh, looking at some of our property in the fair. So, thank you.
And, and the first, just add that in there. Commissioner Rader?
Yes, I, uh, um, I did in my, um, haste to, uh, thank ourselves as commissioners and the community who certainly were engaged as well as the developer. I did neglect, um, to recognize, uh, the incredible effort that our staff has put into, um, making this possible, you know? We put kind of the icing on the cake. They're the ones that build the cake from the bottom up and make sure that the pieces of the cake fit together and that there's, uh, you know, not only, um, the sugar and the eggs, but there's also, you know, the flour and the, um, the bacon powder that makes the whole thing rise up. And, um, in this particular case, we did push the staff very hard to, um, to first help us to get this, um, uh, processed, uh, in, um, in short order, as well as to make sure that we didn't make any mistakes. And I think that, um, coming from that field, um, this is the type of a project that a staff planner really, uh, sort of, uh, wants to work on within their career. It's, you know, I mean, it's, um, certainly a good thing to, um, help to make sure that, um, you know, spot townhouses and other, uh, types of development, uh, occur, and those are quality communities. But building, um, these types of central places, uh, whether they're here or whether they are in Stonecrest or anywhere in the county ultimately are sort of the signature projects and the real milestones in a planner's career. And I just want to thank, um, uh, Mr. Baker, uh, Mr. White, Ms. Furman, um, and all the other, uh, planners that have been, uh, working to make sure that this thing didn't hiccup during, uh, this process. And I really think that the work that y'all have done has been exemplary and that, uh, this will be a lasting monument, um, to your effectiveness as professional planners.
Commissioner Rader, that's quite a compliment for our staff. Thank you for saying something like that. Commissioner Rader, if I could, since it's been a minute since the original motion was made, could I ask you just to restate?
The notion is, uh, for approval with, uh, the conditions, um, that, uh, uh, are attached to the item and dated, uh, dated May 26th, um, as well as the referenced, um, exhibits.
All right. And Commissioner Terry, your second still stands?
Second.
Perfect. Commissioners, unless there's anything else, we'll move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And chair votes I-70 on a brand-new project or remake for our community. So thank you all very much. Much appreciated. Moving on, we have, uh, agenda item N9, which is, uh, 2022-1477. And this is within Commission Districts Three and Seven. Application of Kova Real Estate LLC to rezone property from R-75 Residential Medium Lot 75 to R-60 Residential Medium Lot 60 to allow an 11-lot subdivision for single-family detached homes at 1500 Columbia Drive. And, uh, is it Mr. White or Ms. Bragg that will be talking to us about this one?
Yes, sir, it's me.
All right, Mr. White, it's yours.
All right, here is the zoning map, subject properties, uh, outline here, I am T U. As you can see, located in the R-75 zoning district. Here is the future land use map for the subject property and surrounding area. Aerial subject property. Photographs of the subject property and, uh, adjacent properties. Uh, so if you recall, this, uh, these subject properties were the subject of a request uh, this time last year, uh, for a townhome proposal, and it was ultimately withdrawn, uh, without prejudice. So they've gone back to the drawing board, and they've come back with, uh, proposal for, uh, up to 11 uh, single-family detached units, uh, on the same parcel, uh, of land. Uh, this is the initial, uh, site plan provided by, uh, the applicant. So as you can see, three of the lots are proposed to have access along Columbia Drive, uh, with a primary access. Uh, they would take you to, uh, the other eight lots, uh, on the property. Uh, there was some transportation challenges with, uh, with this proposal, particularly with the closeness of this primary access, uh, the Santa Monica Drive. Uh, and the Transportation Department also had, uh, concerns, uh, about these three curb cuts, uh, along Columbia Drive. So the applicant, uh, has since revised the site plan to this configuration, uh, that's shown here. Uh, the applicant submitted this proposal, uh, during a planning commission meeting, uh, earlier this month. Uh, subsequently, staff, uh, including planning, transportation, uh, roads and drainage and others, uh, have not had time to fully evaluate, uh, this revised site plan, uh, since it's been provided. Uh, so based on the change of the site plan, our staff's recommending, uh, deferral of this case. Uh, and we will yield to the Board of Commissioners, uh, as to how long that deferral should be.
Mr. White, thank you very much. Uh, next, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Right, and let's see, the applicant, thank you. I will ask you to unmute.
Okay, I'm here. Hello, thank you, Board of Commissioners. This is Chima, and also, um, we're located at 6402 Atlantic Boulevard, North Cross Georgia, 3031, 30, 30071. So as Brandon had pointed out, so we, we, uh, trying to rezon from R-75 to R-60. So initially, the idea was to place 11 single-family, uh, building in the lot. But with the revision we made based on the comment from the Traffic Department, we reduced it to 10 to be able to, to kind of, um, move the, the main access away from the traffic point whereby it, it's kind of a blind driveway coming down the highway, coming down Columbia. So we moved it a little bit up north and also eliminated the three driveways, uh, for the passers-up, up north as well. So it's only one driveway and one, uh, and the main access point up to the note. So, um, last, last meeting with staff, uh, planning, uh, with, uh, well, with Planning Commission, they recommended that we do a deferral so that the Transport Department will get a chance to review the plans and come up with, and let me know or let us know if everything is suitable based on the changes that we made. So, um, uh, we're here to see what you guys decide on that, and then we could see how to move forward on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Matowski, if you wouldn't mind, let's open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in support.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Uh, if you would like to speak in support of this item, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
Okay, then let's extend that courtesy to anyone wishing to speak in opposition.
And for opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature, please. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
Okay, uh, uh, Mr. Chima, uh, will give you an opportunity to make a final, final comment before we move on.
Okay, yeah, well, we did have community, uh, meeting, uh, prior. Obviously, that's been a minute ago. So we did have full support of the community based on the meetings. A lot of people were open to having single-family homes there as opposed to, uh, townhomes, which were initially, uh, proposed. Uh, the houses will be in concert with the development in the area. So right now, there are brand-new homes right across the street and right adjacent to my property to the couple of, two brand-new homes that just sold. So, uh, it will be kind of in the traditional what is existing there, as well as bringing new development to the land and to bring more vibrancy to the community as well.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, if I could, Mr. White, uh, if you wouldn't mind, re-reading your recommendation?
A deferral.
Right. And you're looking to the commission to, uh, come up with the timeframe on that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, uh, just to restate this again, this is agenda item, uh, N9, 2022-1477 within Commission Districts Three and Super District Seven, and, uh, open the floor for a motion.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to defer for 45 days, and I have a comment.
All right, we've got a proper motion. Is there a second?
Decision only.
Decision only.
I'll second.
I've got a proper motion and second. Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes, uh, can you, developer, make sure you show us the plans on what you're working on? Is it going to be craftsmanship, bungalows? I know the, the homes you're looking I know the homes you look at across the street are on a slab. I want to see how you're going to put these homes up. And of course, you got Lauren Park across the street that approved about fifteen years ago, still a great townhome community. But just share with us, Commissioner Cochran Johnson and myself, you know, how it's going to look in the monumental sign and let folks know that you're there and just show us those plans so we can know what are we approving. Staff, I hope you, if you have it already, staff, send it to us because I hadn't seen it. But I'd just like to see what is being proposed in terms of style.
Okay. And I want to note, thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. I would note that Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson had her hand raised as well.
Yes, I, I agree. And I would ask that, you know, once they're received and we have the opportunity to review them, when we do the decision only, that we probably need to enter those plans into the record as a part of the condition so that we know exactly what we're getting. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much, commissioners. Let's see here, we've already had Mr. White give us the recommendation. All right, just to say it one more time, this is fourteen seventy eight for Commission Districts three and seven. And we'll go ahead and move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that's seven zero for that forty five day deferral for decision only. And with that, we'll move on to agenda item N ten, which is fourteen seventy eight. This is within Commission Districts three and seven. Application of F L Sims Funeral Home Decatur LLC to rezone from R one hundred residential medium lot to O nine Office Institutional to allow for a funeral home at four zero three one Rainbow Drive. Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, we received notice from the applicant earlier this week. He is requesting withdrawal without prejudice. We support that request. We recommend withdrawal without prejudice.
All right, Mr. White, thank you. If the applicant's here, for him or her, an opportunity to speak to this, Ms. Blumenthal?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. Oh, sorry about that. Good evening again. Danny Blumenthal, Battleaw PC thirty five sixty two Habersham at Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. As Mr. White stated, we'd like to request withdrawal without prejudice on this application. And I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Blumenthal. Mr. Metalski, let's open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in support of this application?
Very well, thank you, sir. If you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And there are no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and extend that courtesy to those wishing to speak in opposition.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature, please. And no requests at this time, sir.
Okay, Ms. Blumenthal, any last comments?
No, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. White, if you would, restate your recommendation?
Withdrawal without prejudice.
Right, thank you very much. And to our commissioners, this is again agenda item fourteen seventy eight within Commission Districts three and seven. I'll open the floor up for a motion.
Yes, I make a motion that this be withdrawn without prejudice. I have one comment.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Commissioner Larry Johnson, you had a comment?
Yes, this is before, I don't know if Ms. Blumenthal may come back with an application, but the residents spoke loud and clear, this is not a commercial corridor. Those commercial establishments on Rainbow happened before I became a commissioner. I would never allow it to go that far down, but this is a truly a residential area that has a major thoroughfare through it. Unlike you have on what you call Claremont Road, where you see consistent residential and it's a busy road. But you know, churches, of course, is part of that. But just make sure that, that we hear the residents as we go in terms of creating more businesses in between residential establishments. So thank you all for listening and making a way for the community to stay sound. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Larry Johnson. Commissioners, unless there's any other questions, we'll go ahead and move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that's seven zero on that request to withdraw without prejudice. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item N eleven, which is twenty.
President Officer, forgive the interruption. You can take eleven and twelve together, please.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioner Bradshaw. So we'll read out N eleven and twelve. This is fourteen seventy nine, Commission Districts four and six. Application of Nationwide Investments LLC to rezone from tier two of the Scottsdale Overlay District to tier one of the Scottsdale Overlay District to allow construction of a single family detached and single family attached townhome development at four nine six Warner, excuse me, Warren Avenue. I'll go ahead and sound out N twelve. Again, that's going to be twenty twenty two fourteen eighty. Again, Commission Districts four and six. Application of Nationwide Investments LLC to rezone from R seventy five residential medium lot seventy five to M R one medium density, medium density residential one to allow construction of a single family detached and single family attached townhome development. Ms. Bragg?
Good evening. So yes, these are N eleven and N twelve. And they are, these properties are located within the Scottsdale Overlay and within the R seventy five zoning district. Currently, they are a mix of, here I provided a summary table showing these proposed changes. Currently, the existing zoning is a mixture of C two and R seventy five. The new proposed zoning would have all parcels rezoned to M R one. Currently, there is a mixture of tier one and tier two, again, within the Scottsdale Overlay, and they would all be rezoned into tier one. This end result would be an existing density. So now tier one is up to twelve units per acre, whereas tier two is six units per acre. And this development is proposing a transitional density of six point six seven, six and a half units per acre. So here you can see the tier map, these are, these two northern parcels are currently in tier two, whereas this greenish color is, is tier one. The tier change would increase the maximum density of these two lots from six units to acre to twelve units per acre. And again, this application does propose a transitional density between the single family units to the north and the greater density permitted in tier one. This tier change will also allow the applicant to develop all the parcels within the same standards of the same tier. And one of the purposes of the Scottsdale Overlay is to encourage new development that is appropriate to the existing character of the Scottsdale community. This support, this proposal does support this purpose. And the proposed density is only slightly higher than the density that's allowed in tier two to the north. Therefore, yeah, staff does recommend approval with conditions of the tier change. Here you can see the zoning map again, these are R seventy five and these are C two. And C two is not an appropriate zoning district within the Scottsdale Overlay based on the prohibited uses. Here you can see these, all of these parcels are T N for traditional neighborhood. Here you can see the aerial, these parcels are largely undeveloped. The only existing development is a vacant commercial building on this lot. Here are some images showing the existing conditions on these properties. And here is the proposed site plan. So the, the proposal includes twelve total dwelling units, four cottage style homes surrounding an open space that will be enhanced with a plaza as well as eight attached townhomes that will front along North Decatur here. The properties will be sold as few simple units and will have a homeowners association to care for the shared property. And the townhomes will be built facing North Decatur with a rear loaded garages. The one and a half story cottages will be clustered around this open space. The applicant will be adding or enhancing all of the sidewalks to bring them up to the Scottsdale Overlay standards, including street plantings. And there are two stormwater management areas. Unfortunately, they are located along North Decatur. But based on the topography of the site, this does appear to be the best location. Staff has included conditions regarding the beautification of those features. Here is another site plan, but I will let the applicant talk more about this. Here are several examples. This is one example of a cottage that would be clustered around the open space and a second smaller cottage that would be kind of at the south of that cottage development. They've also included some floor plans that I will let the applicant speak to. And so this proposal is consistent with the twenty thirty five comprehensive plan for traditional neighborhoods. It's supported by the residential protection policy to protect stable neighborhoods from incompatible development. It supports the walkability to locate development and activities within easy walking distance of transportation. There's a MARTA bus stop at the southwest corner of the property. And infill development permit accessory dwelling units or small scale infill multifamily residence to increase neighborhood density and income diversity. The mixture of small, single family detached houses and attached houses will, or may allow a mixture of incomes and will provide a small scale multifamily infill development. Therefore, staff does recommend approval with conditions. I believe that there, there may have been some additional conditions added. So I guess I would say with substitute conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bragg. Appreciate that. Is the applicant here to speak to the application?
Yes.
All right, sir.
My name is Roger Grant. I'm a landscape architect at Columbia Engineering, twenty eight sixty two Euphor Highway, Duluth, Georgia, three oh oh nine six. I'm on here on behalf of my client, Mr. Michael Miller. We're working on this together. And so we have had, you know, a good experience here. We're excited to bring this project to DeKalb. We've been working with Ms. Bragg and others at DeKalb to try to refine this. We've met with the community, received their input and taken it seriously and adjusted our plan as a result. We've met with county engineering departments to stress test all the engineering of the site. It, it does have considerable topography from top to bottom. Let's say from the cottages at the northern end all the way down to North Decatur Road. It's probably about forty feet of topographic change, sixty nine to. And so, you know, we're, we're excited to, to share this and to be a part of DeKalb County. The essence of this is we are creating a cottage, a combination cottage and townhome community on, under two acres. We're very, very cognizant of all the, the desire to, you know, and maintain the character but also provide these unique living spaces. And so we have really high quality cottage footprints that we're using here. We have Ross Chapin is the renowned architect of the cottage movement. He's out of the Pacific Northwest. We're using two of his prototypes. The bright side is C one through three, those are that, that particular cottage. We were questioned on the last one, what is a one and a half story cottage? So it's basically you have a much smaller living space above generally. And these are all under twelve hundred square feet, or at least the cottages are generally about, you know, eight hundred on the ground floor and four hundred or so above. Based on community input about the residences to the west and making sure we don't set a bad precedent, we used that one that you just saw, that C four cottage, we modified our site plan to use a more narrow cottage. We, you know, we followed the cottage ordinance. We have additionally gotten some feedback from Mr. Terry's office and Commissioner Terry's office, and we're comfortable with the additional items that, that was, were requested about solar PV ready. The sites, the, the homes would all be fit out for potential solar depending on the residents and at the time of building. If that's something that someone wants to take on or wants to add later. And there's, there are a couple of other items, the, the, the productive urban landscaping. We're very comfortable with that. That's, that's going to be a neat addition. And I design and manage public orchard up in Swanee. So I think that's going to be a fun, fun piece of this. And so generally, we, we're excited to, to share this and we hope, we hope that you are too. And I'm here to field any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Metalski, if you could, let's open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application?
Yes, sir, thank you. If you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. Our first request is from Victoria Webb. I will ask Victoria to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, commissioners. My name is Victoria Webb. I live at thirty one thirty seven Rockbridge Road. This is in my neighborhood, the Scottsdale Overlay District. I'm pretty excited about this. This is exactly what we wanted for our neighborhood and we're getting it. It's a mix of cottages and, you know, I'd rather not have townhomes, but it's at least a mix. And I'd like to thank the landscape architect, Mr. Grant, for the revisions. Some of the community were concerned about the lack of separation to the property to the west. We do pay attention to our own specific overlay district code. So I appreciate his willingness to revise the plan to be in compliance with our overlay. I'd also like to thank Ms. Bragg in planning for helping to decipher the old code, which is completely outdated and the changes to the rezoning. This site plan reflects an innovative approach in a residential neighborhood that I hope will continue throughout DeKalb. The mix of cottages and townhomes allows for a green buffer and a community gathering place. We could help put a pollinator garden in here with our DeKalb Solon Water Conservation District. And it just, it would be great if we could encourage more developers to do the same. So I, I'm, I'm really grateful to everybody involved. Thanks.
And thank you for your comment. I'm seeing no additional hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, Mr. Metalski, let's open it up to anyone speaking in opposition?
If you would like to speak in opposition, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And there are no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right, thank you very much. I will give an opportunity for the applicant to speak anymore. If there's anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, we have, we are aware of the consideration of micro units for, you know, future value. We were not fully, you know, understanding of, of all the ins and outs, but architecturally for the townhomes, we have designed them in consideration of potential for the ground floor as a future micro units. It would, it wouldn't be hard to retrofit, but that's not our intent with this development right now. That was just a response to, you know, a general idea of capacity for the future of these homes in the future.
Understood. Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. If I could ask Mr. White, or was it Ms. Bragg, I apologize, to come back with restating the recommendation?
Approval with substitute conditions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bragg. The districts we're talking about here are, pardon me, District- The districts we're talking about here are, pardon me, District Four and Super District Six. Again, these are agenda items 1479 and 1480, and I will open the floor up for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time, I will make a motion to approve with substitute conditions. And I'll simply say before I yield to my colleague, Commissioner Terry, this will be a nice enhancement to that area.
Right. Is there a second?
Second and a comment.
Second and a comment. All right, Commissioner Terry, your comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw and his team and my zoning team for working on this for, for many months. This was sort of an odd little area. The Scottdale Overlay District has, you know, different tiers. And it became clear that, you know, what was sort of mapped out years ago was good in theory. But then when sort of taking a second look and saw a better alignment of, I think, what the community was asking for. And so just, you know, appreciations to Ms. Bragg for, and Mr. Cullison in planning for just working out the, you know, kind of a complex set of things. And but I think what we got out of it is exactly what we heard Ms. Webb say, as well as I think what a lot of the community members said, is that we're getting some improvements to this area. Improvements in a way I think that address the, the more negative consequences of gentrification, which we are aware and are cognizant of is, is happening in the Scottdale area. And thankfully, the overlay district, I think, provides some guardrails on that. And so I think what you're seeing in this case is a, is a good manifestation of why the overlay district is, you know, this tactic I think is so important for revitalization of, of certain character areas. Ms. Bragg mentioned the abandoned commercial building. That's a nice way of putting it. It's like a fallen down shack.
Yep, that's more appropriate for that building, for sure.
And Steve, I mean, you've lived in this area longer than I have. I think it's been there for like 20 years. And, you know, like, that's just, those kinds of things, just it can, it's, what can you say? It's just no one wants to look at that. Ms. Bragg did mention that the stormwater features, because the site really just sort of goes in one direction. It's, it's a very difficult site, which explains why really there hasn't been really much development in that area. All right, Cat, be quiet. Cat's in the window. And so the, I think the commitment to, and I want to make just, Ms. Bragg could just confirm in the conditions that, that we are going to see a landscape plan before the LDP is issued. Just wanted to confirm that was, that was in the conditions, the final conditions.
So I haven't actually seen the conditions that you've discussed with the applicant. So that will have to be confirmed.
Okay, Mr. Grant, I think we sent this to you, right? So I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, we're, we'll absolutely provide a landscape plan. Prior to LDP, you know, I'm happy to provide a conceptual landscape plan during the process. I mean, certainly, we won't be able to obtain LDP approval without your department's, planning department's approval of a landscape plan. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I think, I think we must have sent those updated conditions to Brandon. Does Brandon have them? Just want to make sure I refer, we refer to the right conditions. While you're looking for that, I did want to acknowledge, thank you for the solar and EV ready. Thank you for the cottages. I think that's, again, there's, y'all were looking at just townhomes. And, you know, we've been talking about addressing the missing middle and housing, access housing affordability. So just having a little bit of variability in the housing products is a way to affect affordability broadly in the market. So thank you to just the Mr. Miller for, you know, responding to the community's desire to see different housing options, which are, you know, address different demographic demands.
He's been a great client. It's always great when, when we can get together to do these.
Absolutely.
Pushing a rope.
Is, Ms. Bragg, is Mr. White still on? Did he go to sleep?
I believe he's still with us despite his, his cold.
I appreciate him. Sorry to keep, keep, keep everyone late. I know we were just trying to work out those last little bits, the final, you know, couple of days here. So I just want to make sure we have the rights, you know, document.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm here. What's the question?
Yeah, I think, I think we sent over the updated conditions. Maybe it was yesterday.
We have.
Okay, very good. All right. So we can, do you have the date on that document? Or I want to, I think, Commissioner Bradshaw, did you? Your motion was just with, with the staff conditions, I assume, like as, as most recently received.
Yes. What's, 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 you sent that to him yesterday, right?
Yeah, Mr. White, do you have the right?
Looks like this is dated Thursday, 11:00.
Now Ted, we could, we could defer for two weeks for decision only if this isn't deconflicted.
Well, the only other, the only, the main addition was the, the landscape plan, because I know that was an important part of the stormwater features and just the overall landscape.
Is that, is that in what you have, Brandon?
So there are, there are 10 conditions.
Yeah, condition 10 references our urban landscaping plan.
All right, there.
We don't have the document. If there's a document, we don't have.
That's right. So the, the condition will be to get the landscape plan before the LDP is issued. Is that right?
That you're understanding, Brandon?
Item or?
No service.
Six, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Condition number six says prior to land development permit approval, the developer must declare which amenities will be provided and provide plan details. That's the only condition I see that specifically mentions the land development permanent approval.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Bradshaw, would you mind just amending your motion just to reference the landscape plan also being approved before the LDP?
Yes, my motion's amended to encompass that.
All right, I'll second that.
All right.
No more discussion. Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and move into the roll call. Commissioner Rader?
Hi.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Hi.
Commissioner Terry?
Hi.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. That's seven zero in the affirmative for this item here. All right, commissioners, we have.
Chair, forgive the interruption. You can take 13 and 14 together.
I appreciate the interruption. Thank you. All right, moving on to N13, which is 1481, and N14, which is 1482. These are for commission districts four and six. Application of AK Memorial Shopping Center LLC to amend the future land use map from NC Neighborhood Center to CRC Commercial Redevelopment Corridor Character Area to allow for film, movie, TV production studios at 5615 Memorial Drive. And I'll go ahead and read out 1482. Application of AK Memorial Shopping Center LLC to rezone properties from C1 Local Commercial to OD Office Distribution Zoning District to allow for film, movie, TV production studios at 5615 Memorial Drive. And with that, do we have, is it Mr. White or Ms. Bragg? Mr. White?
I'm back on deck. All right. So this proposal that you have for you, here's one, a future land use amendment to the comprehensive plan. Change that designation from Neighborhood Center to Commercial Redevelopment Corridor and rezoning from Local Commercial to Office Distribution. This proposed site plan is for redevelopment of this site to accommodate a movie studio film production facility here. The intentions of the applicant and development team is to use the existing building for support, office milling, and other support uses related to studio production activities. Additionally, it includes the construction of two to three sound stages at 50, 50, 50 foot height maximum. As you can see here, in the front of the existing building, development will take advantage of existing ingress, egress along Memorial Drive and Hamrick Road to get it in and out of the site. In addition to upgrading the property to meet current parking standards and landscaping where appropriate, the applicant is also proposing to significantly enhance the streetscapes along Memorial Drive with landscaping and decorative wall, perimeter wall around the site to serve for both artistic flair in addition to their security needs. This is the current future land use map for the subject property and the intersection of Memorial Drive and Hamrick Road. The subject property is outlined here in this reddish color. And as you can see, it's located in the core of this Neighborhood Center character. And so we feel that this proposal, this is a unique proposal and an opportunity to transform this area both from a land use perspective, economic development perspective, and to additionally contribute positively to the enhancement of the Memorial Drive corridor. And so we feel that it's fit for changing this particular land use designation and being a catalyst for conversion of the remainder of this character area to CRC Commercial Redevelopment Corridor to take advantage of this particular use potentially other unique light industrial or other alternative commercial opportunities that may be beneficial to the community in the surrounding area. Here's the current zoning map. Subject property C1, there's some adjacent C2, and there's also some OD in the surrounding area as well. Here's an aerial of the subject property. And so staff have been in coordination with the applicant over the course of this week. The applicant, applicant has notified us that they would like to request a 30 day deferral to work through some outstanding issues with the set of conditions related to, to this proposal. And so that 30 day deferral would apply to both the future land use requests and the zoning requests.
All right, Mr. White, thank you very much. Do we have the applicant here?
Yeah, good, good evening, everybody. This, my name is Ali Khatoots, and I've got my team here, Patrick and Scott. And I think we have Crystal just logging in from home. So first of all, I want to appreciate your time of listening to us. Again, I want to give you a little bit of a history about this property. We bought this property about five years ago. It was a value mall and we tried to do an incubator for a lot of small mom and pop businesses. And we converted it to a, you know, kind of a mall and indoor mall or flea markets. And that thing went through about maybe 1,000 people, 1,000 businesses went through that mall. And, you know, inside and then also outside. And we tried to put a lot of life support on it. And eventually this thing is just, you know, was not making any business sense for us to keep it alive. So due to our experience and expertise in other industry, because we are real estate people, so we do own and operate other movie studio. And we felt that this is, would be a good opportunity for us to convert the existing building to accessories and ancillaries to the business and build two sound stages or about 80,000 square feet of sound stages in front of it to, to serve the movie industry. And so the building is 150,000 square feet, the existing building, and we're proposing another 80,000 square feet of, you know, sound stages. And here I give it to Crystal and Crystal could just jump in and tell more about the, the planning of the other stuff that we have in mind to do in this area.
I believe you have to release her. She's muted right now and cannot unmute.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Ali. Good afternoon, everyone. I don't have access to the PowerPoint, so if you can go ahead and move the slide, whoever's in control. Okay, thank you. So we're here today to ask for rezoning of the property. The current use is C1 or Shopping Center, and we're looking to be able to rezone the property into the OD zoning. It's a currently 1,000, 120,000 square feet of shopping center. And next slide, please. This is a comprehensive plan of what we are looking to do. There are two different options here, and we are not married to either of them as we work with the county on some of the conditions. If you can, next slide, please. In order for us to get to this place where we decided to even convert the property into sound stages, we worked with the county hand in hand on the revitalization plan for the Memorial Drive corridor. And within that plan, we, we noticed that there was a section that talked about changing the perception, which talks about film development and making movies on the corridor. And being that this was a part of our business, us having a soundstage in Atlanta, we decided, hey, since the shopping center model was not working for us, why not bring a movie production studio to this property and be able to add value to the property as well as the area with some of our experience? And especially now with everyone knowing that this industry is pretty much booming. And so with that in mind, we decided, hey, let's try to rezone the property for film production. Okay, next slide, please. Some of the things we're looking to do along with this project is be able to still make a great impact to the community. We're looking to have some community empowerment. We've worked hand in hand with some community leaders within this direct area, including the CPAC, DeKalb Tech, the Clarkston Campus, Stone Mountain High School, as well as Date Academy. And so we were looking to continue those partnerships and be able to offer tours on the property, screenwriting and acting classes and things like that. And so these are just some of the things that we're looking to bring if we're able to get the property rezoned for film. Next slide, please. These are just some of the films and some of the partners that we've worked with at our studios in Atlanta. We've worked with some of the bigger names. We do consider ourselves be some of the experts in the industry. And so we would be looking to bring this type of high class clients to our sound stages in Stone Mountain. Next slide, please. Okay, and I'll turn this over to Ali. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Crystal. Mr. Khatoots?
All right. Thank you, Crystal. Well, I'm, I'm going to keep, this is very short. And so there's a, we met with the people from the community. We, you know, we will reach out to a lot of different community leaders, as Crystal said. And there's a couple of points that I wanted to make sure that we get across here that this facility will have absolutely no noise issue because most of the filming will be happening inside the studio and nothing will be on the outside. So that's one thing, because a lot of the neighbors kind of, you know, have those comments back. Another thing is, you know, this is going to be, you know, with the full time security surrounding the, the area and surrounding the space, because this is going to bring a lot of, you know, traffic to the area. So this is going to be a very highly secured area. So some of the comments, we've heard that this, you know, because of the amount of traffic, this is maybe could, you know, participate in crimes and others. But, you know, this is a very sensitive industry and security. But you know, this is a very sensitive uh industry and security is their priority. Uh and 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 again, last and not least, you know, this is a, we believe a a project like this. Will really do great in the area and will, you know, help a lot of those small businesses uh along Memorial Drive. Uh with that, I would, you know, as as uh Brandon mentioned, that we are still working on the zoning conditions, so. We'd like to have a a defer of thirty days to uh work those out uh between us and 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 the county. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Khatoots, uh thank you for your comments. Mr. Metowski, if we could, let's open the floor up to uh anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
Absolutely. If you'd like to speak in support of the application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. Our first request is Jan Dunaway. I'll ask Jan to unmute. If she'd like to start her video, she may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jan Dunaway. I live at forty-six seventy-two Felswood Drive in Stone Mountain, about a quarter mile from the the uh property. Uh I have worked closely with um the applicant. I'm uh was hoping we'd be able to get this approved tonight. I'm disappointed we can't, but uh I and many of the others uh neighbors, some who are not able to be here tonight. Are in favor of both the land use and the rezoning. I'm also in favor of the um item N nineteen that goes along with this. We're excited. I've lived here thirty years in this location. This is the best opportunity that I have seen for us to uh improve this area. So I am excited about it. Uh and I hope that we can work through the conditions and um make this work, because I think we need it here. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. Our next request is from Sharon. I'll ask Sharon to unmute if she'd like to start her video. She may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Uh yes, hello. My name is Sharon Doherty. Um I am at four-five-two-five Cherie Glen Trail. And I'm about five minutes from the proposed site, so I will keep this brief. My family and I have been homeowners and business owners around this neighborhood for twenty-seven years. We've raised our daughters here and we are so in favor and so excited about this opportunity. You know, for twenty-seven years, you know, we've watched Memorial Drive change from a thriving live-work-play. Corridor to really a desolate area that has been desperate for revitalization. We've raised our daughters here. They graduated from Decav Early College Academy, Georgia State, Agnes Scott. They're lifelong four-Hers. And they want to be the future of this community, you know, they want to have what we promised them when we purchased our home here. So, you know, we really want to give the young people of this community what we think they deserve, you know, in having. Uh Memorial Drive take advantage of this opportunity and to take advantage of what the entertainment industry is bringing to Metro Atlanta. You know, I think that we deserve it, the businesses, the education programs, the recreation programs. And all of the potential that, you know, could potentially bring Memorial Drive back to what it once was. So I really hope that we can meet the conditions and 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 pass this, because I think we deserve it and I think we need it for the future of Decav County and Memorial. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Our next request is from Yotin. I will ask Yotin to unmute. If they'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Yotin Siwan Jalan. Uh I'm the senior VP at the Center for Pan Asian Community Services, um also known as CPAC. So we are a nonprofit that provide health and social services. Uh we operate youth program nearby the studio. So we support the rezoning for the establishment of the production studio. We believe that it will be beneficial for the business in the area and the committee at large. So in particularly, uh we are excited about the opportunity uh of connecting the youth we serve to the studio. So they can experience firsthand what is possible for them. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments. Our next request is from Omar. I will ask Omar to unmute if they'd like to, Omar would like to start the video, he can't, and please state your name and address for the record.
Uh my name is Omar Shikay. Uh I am the Executive Director of Somali American Community Center. We are four-three-six North Indian Creek Drive, Clarkston, Georgia. I have been working with refugees uh the last twenty-five years. I have met uh the people who are running this project, the brother Khatoot and Crystal and Mimi and everybody. The whole community, the Somali American community and immigrants, we met them. We uh discussed about everything. So uh there are three things that are very important this project will do to the community. Number one, I run after-school program. When I need to educate our kids on art and I have to take them sometime in Athens, sometimes far away in downtown. So this project will help us educate and introduce firsthand art, filming, sound to our kids. Something that we always wanted to introduce to our children. The other thing is also this will reduce give opportunity, people who want to have career, uh movie stars. The the refugee have aspiration. Uh a lot of the area is down now, uh stores open close, you know. This is the best opportunity for us and people talk about sex trafficking. This has nothing to do with it. This project is clearly something that we really need. We are a very conservative community too. We talked, we've seen all the benefits, so I am one hundred full supporter of this project. This will produce trickle economics, uh the businesses will benefit, home uh value will grow up. This will reduce crime, so please, this is perfect, that can happen to us, because no one else wants to invest this area. So this man has put a lot of emphasis, a lot of his time, a lot of his money, he's consulting with us all the way, every step. So I am one hundred supportive of this project.
Thank you so much for your comments. Our next request is from Shantel Lana Hereford. I will ask Shantel to unmute. If you'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Brand Rising, hello, my name is Shantea Hereford. And I am uh at fifty-four eighty-one Memorial Drive. I'm a local entrepreneur, president of East Memorial Drive Revitalization Foundation. Also Executive Director of the Center for Truth and Healing. Um I've raised my kids in this community. I've also worked in this community for um since twenty thirteen. And this community has, like um another woman said earlier, I didn't catch her name, but very desolate. And I think that this project is very critical um and a vital part of the redevelopment that the community has voted for. When we passed the revitalization project, I had an opportunity to meet with Mimi and Crystal with their team. And I'm very confident that this studio is going to be an anchor that will draw additional investment, additional developers to come into our community. So I am in full support of this project and I'm looking forward and hoping that this will get passed.
Thank you so much for your comments. Our next request is from Marva Brian. I'll ask Marva to unmute. She'd like to start her video, she may, and please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Brian?
Unmute. Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can. Um I'm sorry, it took me a while to unmute. My name is Marva Brian. I live at um. Forty-six seventy-eight Felswood Drive. I'm a member to uh Jan Dunaway, who spoke earlier. I've lived in this neighborhood for um almost thirty years. And this is absolutely the very best thing that has um opportunity that has has come into this neighborhood since I've been here. I've been very disappointed that we haven't been able to attract um any new development that would advance this community. Um the revitalization plan that was approved uh many, many years ago, we had hoped would have done that, and this is the first thing that has happened. It um fits in with the re- revitalization plan and I'm in the full support of it. At everything that has been said so far in support of this um project, I um I stand one hundred percent behind. I'm also in economic development myself and I understand the importance of the impact of a a project of this magnitude in a community like this. And um it is time, I can't imagine anything else that could bring the new and 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 um. Forward-thinking, forward-looking development that we desperately need in this area. It's my hope that we could, this would be um, this would be the impetus to invite the CID to come on down this corridor corridor. And um help to to bring some revital- revitalization and some beautification down this corridor and and hopefully stem um. The wave of homelessness and 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 crime that we've been experiencing. So one hundred percent support the the approval of this project.
Thank you so much for your comments. Mr. Presiding Officer, unfortunately, the time has expired uh for this particular session.
Hmm, okay. Um well, I'd like to say we acknowledge that there are three other hands that are raised, but we do have uh, we do have to stick within that fifteen-minute timeframe. So um I do appreciate you guys coming out. Uh Mr. Metowski, uh do we have anyone that's wanting to speak in opposition to the application?
And if you would like to speak in opposition of the application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And our first request is from Mary Webb. I'll ask Mary to unmute if she'd like to start her video, she may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, my name is Mary Webb and I live at eight-nine-one Fireside West, Stone Mountain, Georgia, three-zero-zero-eight-three. Um I uh definitely oppose this suggestion. Um and I am one of the people that brought up the sex trafficking and pornography issue, which is a modern-day form of slavery. Um I serve in a sex trafficking ministry called Out of Darkness, uh also known as Frontline Response to AIDS and the Rescue of Men/Women. That are enslaved in sex trafficking. And basically, what our understanding is, is that this is a rental property that will be rented out to different. Maybe whatever studio sets for four to seven months at a time, which will then more than likely bring in mostly transient employees. Which we don't know who they are, uh they haven't been background checked. Uh where will they stay? Would they be in uh, you know, staying in the homes around us that are rental homes? Um basically, when people, when when people traffic people, they look for schools. So if you take a look at our area, we have about thirteen different schools with children. From kindergarten up to high school within a one-to-four-mile radius. So that that's a a great pool for uh people to be looking for. Um it's a lot like uh when uh when there are big events in Atlanta and it brings a lot of people. And when that happens, then sex trafficking goes up. And it's not worth one child, not one child being lost to that, not one of our kids. So that's number one. And then uh number two is the uh the integrity. Of what's been happening on this property for two to three years. Um there's been, what, six to eight different outdoor events that were not permitted, that weren't inspected by the fire marshal. Um the police didn't come to actually check it out. Um you know, they have attracted street racers, they have had uh DJs out in the parking lot. With uh degrading, saying degrading things about women and and different things and cursing. Um and that attracts street racers who then put on shows on Memorial Drive and around us. And then when the event's over, they don't want to go home because they've had a good time here. So um if you will drive by, maybe it'll be cleaned up by tomorrow, but uh they had an event uh. A fair about uh three weeks ago and they still have trash. They had a big, huge construction dumpster uh that was overflowing and the trash is still out there. And I think people are now starting to put trash on top of it. So, you know, I look at what's been happening there and the management, the ownership. And uh yes, things have gotten a little tidier in certain ways, but to use an outdoor parking lot. For in the intent that doesn't necessarily even match what was going on on the inside, um it was wrong. And, you know, what good are are zoning laws? What good are, what what good is muni code if no one will enforce it? So, yeah, we had, I question noise, um I question who that, who they will bring. I have a lot of questions. My question is, is if if you approve it for uh rezoning and other things fall into place. What's to say that they even have to put movie theater, uh excuse me, movie production offices there? What if they change it? You can't, you then you can't control it. So, you know, there's no guarantee of anything for us here. You know, my my street is on the map. When they show the map, my street's right there. So sound, if you've investigated sound, sound waves go up. So I'm level and or up. And we think about, you know, we already hear the trash dumpsters in the morning real early between four and five. I think that's probably against code. I have to think about, you know, all the construction that would be going on constantly. I mean, that would go along with movie studio studios and all the different traffic coming through. So there's a lot to consider, but when I sit back and I take a look at my community, and I've been here for about thirty-one years. I've raised my family here and I love it here. We have beautiful trees, we have. Uh you know, if it weren't for some of the commercial stuff and some of the nightclubs that get out of hand, this is a beautiful place to live. You know, most of us drive between one and four miles to pick, get our knees met. I get my knees met perfectly here. I love this community. I love the people in this community. I love the diversity of this community. We are blessed in this community. When I look at it, I don't see blight. Yes, uh we do need to, you know, remodel, of course. We do need to grow, of course. Um and and the other thing is, is don't make it where you change things so much that you run people out of here. That don't have another place to go, and I'm speaking of low-income people. And I know that you guys tried for a a place, but my thought is, is get some of these older apartment complexes. And build those up, tear them down and and put more in there. I mean, we can all live here. We all have a right to live here. Whether we're in apartment homes, whether we're in condos, whether we're in single-family dwellings, we all, we're a community. Okay, when you look around, this is residential. The the what what you guys are talking about is just a little edge of uh that that borderlines our properties here. My my community, Hearthstone, sits right on Memorial Drive. I'm like one row over from Memorial Drive. So I love this community. I believe that everyone that spoke for and against, I believe that that they love this community as well. But I think before you take the wrecking ball and go, well, nobody else wants us, this is it, you know, that's just not true. Okay, they they've had an opportunity for five years to make a difference and what have they done? Okay, I mean, if you're a great business person, you know, you can do it. So that's my say. Um thank you for listening.
And thank you for your comments.
Mr. Metowski, if I can, uh just a quick time check, how much time do we have available for the?
Eight minutes, sir, eight minutes.
Okay, uh just to the next two speakers, please be mindful, it's limited to eight minutes, and if if uh one person takes all the time, then no one else gets an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Our next request is from T. Butler. I'll ask them to unmute. If they'd like to start their video, they may, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, uh my name is Tiffany Butler and I live in the Ashland Pines community. Um the reason that I am against um the studio coming into the community is because that property. Was also used for a gym, um for several of kids to come to to learn different sports. While I believe all children should have the right to explore um any extracurricular activity they are interested in. Um that gym was home to a lot of kids, a lot of opportunities, a lot of great things. There are a lot of kids that attended that gym. Um that are honor roll students that do great things in the school. And as the lady who just said, that it's a residential area, so. That place is a safe place for those kids to come to and have fun and learn. Um I think with coming and putting a um, putting a studio in it will affect the properties over there. What does housing look like over there? Um how much will rent increase? How much will, you know, the the changes that are gonna happen about in that community? I think that y'all should definitely look into that, how this is gonna affect the people that have been there already. With bringing something into there is gonna be change and it's gonna cost a whole lot for the people that are already struggling over there.
All right. I'm sorry, but uh go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off. Unmute it if you'd like.
Oh, no, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Again, my apologies, didn't mean to cut you off there. Our next request is Deborah Mitchell. Deborah, if you'd like to uh unmute, please do, uh and if you'd like to start your video, you can, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Um can you hear me?
Good evening. Um, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. Um, my name is Deborah Mitchell. My address is five, five, six, zero Rutland Trace, Lathonya, Georgia. And thank you so much for allowing us to speak. Um, I know for the owners, uh, of this property is business, but for, for us, it is about saving lives. And this, the ISA gym has served as a catalyst to help keep young kids off the street. It is also during the pandemic, a place for kids to go that dealt with mental health and depression. The ISA gym also helped with after school programs and creating, uh, scholarships for kids within the school, um, within the, the cap county. I, I, all we're asking for is also more time to relocate if that's going to be the only choice that we are pushed out two months and in the middle of the summer, when kids are getting out of school and more and more kids are going to be walking the street over at, uh, on Memorial Drive, the apartment complexes over there, those kids, they are able to walk to the gym because it's in walking distance in the community. And this is coming, I'm a grandmother and a mother. And this is coming from a mother that has lost a child to gun violence. Helping to keep these kids off the street is survival for mu- many of them. And ISA will even sometimes supply meals and something to eat for those children. So I'm, I'm just, to the owner, and, and when we had the meeting on May fifth, um, we were told that the owners were going to talk with the cap county, uh, recreation department and get back with us. Well, I did reach out to Crystal to find out what was the result of that meeting. And I didn't get a response back. So we're just asking also for time to get these kids placed somewhere on Memorial and walking distance so we can continue to keep them off the street. Thank you.
And thank you so much for your comments, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer. That exhausts the current request for comments.
Okay. All right. With that then, uh, let me go ahead and return back to Mr. Ali Khatun, uh, for an opportunity to speak again, a rebuttal or anything else you'd like to add to the conversation.
Yeah, good, uh, good, uh, good evening, everybody. Again, uh, I, you know, I think I heard the comments and, uh, you know, I just wanted to, uh, respond back in a way that, again, at the end of the day, we have done our part for the past five years to put a life into the shopping center. And, uh, including the gym, we understand the, uh, where the community is coming uh, from, but you know, i- in a certain points, it's just, uh, it has to make business sense for business people like us. So I believe, uh, you know, we've done and we've, uh, we've done everything in our power to make this is a successful journey for the, uh, current use, but, uh, I guess, uh, we just, it's not happening. So, but that's all that I have in common. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Khatun. Appreciate those comments. Uh, next I'll ask, uh, Mr. White if he would reiterate his recommendation.
Uh, we're recommending a thirty day deferral and I guess we yield to commissioners to determine whether that's, uh, public hearing or decisional.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Uh, let me call out this area one more time. Again, this is, uh, N thirteen, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-one and N fourteen, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-two for, uh, districts four and six. And at this time, commissioners, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, at this time I'm going to make a motion for a thirty day deferral for a public hearing. And if I can get a second, I have a comment, please.
Wait, is there a second?
I can add a comment also, please.
All right. Thank you very much, commissioners. Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things, obviously, uh, we've heard a significant amount of support inclined for this project. We've heard some against, but clearly support exists for moving forward with this project. Uh, I can tell you, I've been inclined to be supportive of it since the day it was presented to me a few months ago. Uh, when we funded the Memorial Drive study a while back, I was, my hope was that someday we get to the point where we had the potential for potentially catalytic, catalytic development. I don't know if this is it, but it may very well be. And I certainly hope that it is. So thirty days will give all parties some time to work through the issues with the remaining conditions and work through some of the issues that have been addressed by the folks who have spoken in opposition. And one final point of clarity for, uh, Ms. Brian, who I've known for years, the revitalization plan that we're working from is not years and years old. It was adopted in September of twenty twenty, which is less than two years ago. So just for that point of clarity. Otherwise, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust the, uh, planning department and the developer to work through whatever remaining issues there are, and we'll see where we stand in thirty days. And I yield back to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioner Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and I want to echo, um, the sentiments of Commissioner Bradshaw. Um, agree that this, um, I think, uh, potential project and as we work out the final details, I think represents tremendous opportunity for, uh, an area, um, of the county where, um, you know, five commissioners, uh, districts meet. And it's no doubt that Memorial Drive is a very important to the county. Uh, I think the work that Commissioner Johnson, Bradshaw and Cochran Johnson have been doing over the last several, several years, um, is, is, is really paying off. And I want to just recognize just recently, uh, with the four hundred thousand dollar, uh, tax allocation district investment, uh, to revitalize the old Office Depot Shopping Center, really just, you know, right across the street from this, um, this site. Um, as well as the, 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 uh, the new sort of, um, entry and gateway improvements. Um, there's a lot of really important things happening. Um, and, and, and we had an opportunity to really explore, uh, you know, some kind of more, as Commissioner Bradshaw pointed, some more visionary and cata- catalytic types of ideas from Memorial Drive, uh, in working with the Georgia Tech Design Studio. And I want to thank Commissioner Bradshaw and Cochran Johnson and, uh, and my, my office for all working together. Um, you know, to really just take a, a kind of a, a visionary and, you know, aspirational look at um, certain areas of Memorial Drive. And, and one of the, 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 the pro- one of the areas in the project, uh, was the site. And the, the students in the design studio knew that, you know, that there was this application. And so the students actually crafted, I think, what, um, is, was a really important just kind of moment for me personally, thinking kind of, you know, bigger and, and visionary. Um, because the site next door, if you ever go back to the slide, there was the site that's in question that we're talking about right now. And then right next door is almost an identical site in terms of parking lot space setback and sort of commercial building, uh, square footage. And the students really, I think, in my mind sparked something that I think is what is a kind of the core of the revitalization project that Commissioner Bradshaw mentioned, um, is that we want to see more housing. We want us, we see more activity centers. We want to see more public realm, more connectivity. And, um, and so, you know, one of the things that I've asked and I want to, you know, continue to encourage the applicant, um, to pursue, um, is looking at the site next door, um, to really develop a complimentary feature to, I think, what is becoming a very important, uh, job center, um, as well as a revitalization area. But we have to be honest with ourselves and just recognize that the movie industry is a very contained industry. Um, it's not something where you can just walk in off the street and you can show up at a soundstage, right? Um, there are measures in place that to a large extent, you know, create a buffer from the public realm into the private realm. Um, and I think what the opportunity we have next door on that other site is the potential to develop a public realm uh, with new investments, um, in, in the same vein, I think, is what we've been talking about with a lot of the projects here tonight. Um, more opportunities for activities, public gatherings, a, a mix of uses that complement each other and that are in line with revitalization, um, framework. Um, so I think there's an opportunity there. Um, a- as has been mentioned before, this doesn't happen overnight. It takes years and years and years. And as we just heard at the North Cap Mall site, um, ten years is the horizon. So, you know, kudos to the commissioners that have been working for years to get us to this point. And now we have a potential catalyst project. Um, and I think we, that we're just maybe one step away from maybe doing something a little bit bigger. So I want to encourage us to keep working and kind of identify those areas of opportunity. Um, it was mentioned that the, um, that the, the, the local community, uh, is, there's a lot of, um, members, I, I saw my friend Omar on here who works a lot with the, the refugee community. It's, but clearly is an aspirational, um, goal of, of engaging the residents in the movie industry. So one thing I want us to work on in the next thirty days, um, is how do we address, uh, local hire goals? Um, these are not something that we can necessarily mandate, but we can work on, you know, programs and sort of agreements, uh, between the developers uh, to sort of seek out that local opportunity, um, for entryway. Of course, we have Georgia Piedmont College, really just right across the street and down the road. Um, and so the, 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 the opportunity is there. Um, and I really just appreciate Christian Bradshaw for working, um, to really to get us to this point where we have these opportunities before us. Um, and so I look forward to working over the next thirty days with staff, um, and, um, and the applicant to, um, uh, to address some of the things we've discussed today. And with that, I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Terry. With that, uh, go ahead and call the role. Uh, Commissioner Rader?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, seven, zero in the affirmative for the thirty day deferral and public hearing. All right, uh, commissioners, we're getting there. Uh, we're going to move on now to N fifteen and, uh,
Mr. Chair, we can take fifteen and sixteen together.
Mr. Bradshaw was reading your mind.
That's very dangerous. You don't want to be there, man.
Uh, we'll, we'll call it. I'll call these out right now. Uh, N fifteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-three, Commission District Four and Seven. Uh, application of Battle Law PC to rezone property from R one hundred, residential median lot one hundred to RSM residential small lot mixed to develop a twenty-six unit senior housing community at three, seven, three Stone Mountain, Lathonya Road. And, uh, hang on one second. Let me read that next one out as well. Uh, N sixteen, uh, twenty twenty-two dash fourteen eighty-four, again, Commission Districts Four and Seven. Uh, application of Battle Law PC for special land use permit, SLUP, to develop senior housing cottages within the RSM residential small lot mixed district at three, seven, three Stone Mountain, Lathonya Road. And, uh, Mr. White, you're taking, you're leading the way on this one.
Yes, sir. Uh, so the, uh, the applicants, uh, this was the initial plan submitted, uh, with the proposal. Uh, twenty-three units, uh, cottage style development, uh, specifically for senior citizens. Uh, the applicant has since modified the plan, uh, to break the, uh, break the units up into smaller pods. And so this plan is relatively new. I think we got it within the past week or two. Uh, so, uh, they would like to go back, share this with the community, uh, and get some feedback, uh, and then come back to you. So the applicant's requested a thirty day deferral, uh, for public hearing, uh, and we support, uh, that recommendation and that request.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Uh, can we hear from the applicant, Ms. Blumenthal?
Hey, good evening. I guess I should probably say good night at this point. Danny Blumenthal at Battle Law PC, thirty-five sixty-two Haversham at Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. Um, I believe that we sent some slides in, um, just to quickly go through, um, the changes. If not, if I would be able to, uh, share my screen, uh, quickly.
Did you send those to me?
I think they're already in, um, the, the, the slides, Brandon.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I'm just going to quickly go through this. Um, so we're seeking to rezone this property, um, from R one hundred to RSM to allow for twenty-three fee simple bungalows for active senior adults fifty-five and older. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, here's the subject property where that red pin is, uh, towards the top of the screen. Yeah, right there where the, uh, the cursor circling. So we're right below Carriage Walk, um, which is a similar community. And then it also kind of comes behind it. So we're just tucked, tucked right in there. Um, and there's nothing really going on right there. Um, so this seems like a really great location for, um, for this type of a, uh, community. Thank you. So this is currently, uh, zone R one hundred, as I stated, and it has a suburban future land use. So this is, uh, consistent with the request. Next slide, please. Awesome. So this is the original site plan. Um, you know, quickly, it was kind of just all of these, uh, twenty-three homes. So we're keeping that consistent, but it was around a common green um, with the parking kind of scattered around it, uh, as well as having a parking pad on each of the units. Uh, next slide, please. So this was the original elevation. Um, and I will say that at this time, uh, we're currently working on getting an elevation that's consistent with what we want to develop. That also makes sense financially, uh, for what we're trying to achieve here. So it won't necessarily be this, um, elevation, but this is kind of the inspiration. Um, but, but surely they should be able to, uh, to share that with, uh, commissioners and with the public as well. Uh, thank you. So again, this is new site plan. Um, you could see there's parking pads on some units, um, but the rest, the guest parking and the parking for, uh, the residents of the other units will be in this kind of central parking. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so each of the homes now two thousand, or excuse me, each of the lots, uh, now is two thousands, two thousand square feet. Uh, minimum heated floor area will now be a thousand square feet, whereas before it was eight hundred square feet. Um, so slightly larger units now, uh, lots are grouped together in smaller clusters to create pocket neighborhoods, uh, which really should encourage neighbors to interact, um, on more of a daily basis, um, in the outdoor spaces, shared areas, um, as opposed to having one big, uh, area. It's kind of, uh, a little homier. Um, there'll be eleven units with that private driveway. Um, they're like the parking pad connected directly to the home. Uh, and the other twelve units will have just a reserved parking spot, uh, in that central parking lot. But there will be a total of forty-eight spots, uh, with twenty-three spaces reserved for owners, twenty-five guest spaces. Um, and this is again a senior product, so there's not really a need for, um, you know, an, an abundance of parking. Uh, you know, they're not going to have five kids living with them or anything like that, um, so that, you know, this should be more than enough parking. Uh, and the next slide, please. So here's just, uh, kind of a, an idea of what, um, the homes will look like. So this is just one example here, two floors, um, it's a two bedroom, so master on main on this one with the secondary bedroom and bathrooms and storage, um, on the second floor. Next slide, please. Thank you. And this is just another example. This is a ranch, uh, again, a two bed, two bath, but all on one, uh, one floor. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so just some of the, uh, amenities and some of the things that the homes will offer. They'll all be energy efficient with, uh, op- an option to, uh, have solar energy or solar panels on the roofs. Uh, all homes will be smart homes. There'll be electric car charging on site. Amenities will be an event lawn, uh, community garden, walking trails, a dog park, um, plus those three smaller green areas, uh, within the little clusters of the homes. Uh, community will be a lifestyle choice for active adults who are environment, environmentally conscious and want a unique, uh, pocket neighborhood experience, which is, uh, I wouldn't say very different, but it's definitely different from the traditional suburban subdivision experience. Uh, there'll also be a mandatory homeowners association with covenants limiting ownership, uh, and residence. Uh, there'll also be a mandatory homeowners association with covenants limiting ownership, uh, and residents fifty-five and older. Next slide, please. Uh, so surrounding community property is near Wade Walker Family YMCA and Park. It's really just down the block, uh, Rockbridge Place Shopping Center, uh, with Food Depot, CVS, Citizens Trust Bank. Uh, it's just a five minute drive from downtown Stone Mountain, an entrance to Stone Mountain Park. It's also five minutes, uh, from the Stone Mountains to Kellogg Library and the Southland Golf and Country Club. So there's really a lot going on in that area, uh, making it attractive for, for new residents and, and those who are already in the area hoping to, to kind of age in place there. Um, so one final slide here, uh, proposed building materials will be hardy plank, uh, with brick accents. Unit sizes will be, uh, just over a thousand square feet up to twelve hundred. Uh, they'll all be two bedroom units, no garages. We kind of went over the parking. Anticipated list price will be the high two hundred thousand. Uh, there will be some, uh, security features. Um, and if the project approves, is approved, um, then the units will be available roughly summer of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and they'll be marketed again to active adults, uh, fifty-five and older. Um, so as previously stated, we just would like to, um, ask for a thirty day, uh, deferral to a lot of time for us to bring this new site plan to the community and to get their feedback. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Blumenthal. Uh, next, uh, Mr. Metalski, if we could open the floor to anyone wanting to speak in support of the application.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, if you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And we have no requests at this time, sir.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the door for, uh, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature, please. And no requests at this time, sir.
Okay. Ms. Blumenthal, anything else you'd like to add beyond what you've already stated?
I know, sir. That's all. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thanks so much. Uh, Mr. White, if you would, restate the recommendation to us.
Thirty day deferral for public hearing.
All right. And, uh, again, everybody, this is, um, sixteen, uh, N fifteen and sixteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-three, fourteen eighty-four. And this is for Commission Districts Four and Super Seven. And commissioners, I'll open the floor to a motion.
Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion to defer thirty days for public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Uh, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move into the roll. Commissioner Rader.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Uh,
Commissioner Terry.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, yes, but I, I did have a one question.
I apologize. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Okay. I, I, I just had a question because this was a senior unit. And, um, there, under what was just presented, there would be no, uh, covered parking and no garage for seniors fifty-five or older.
Um, that, that is correct. Um, yeah, at this time.
Okay. It seems a little inconsistent. You have a senior community, yet you have no cover parking for them to walk out in the elements, uh, depending on the weather. So I, I just wanted to ask that. But thank you. But I'm, I'm, I'm here for the referral.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Uh, Commissioner Cochran Johnson, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that's seven zero on the deferral for public hearing in thirty days. With that, commissioners, we're gonna move on to, um, N seventeen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-five. This is, uh, for all Commission Districts, application of Director of Planning and Sustainability for text amendment to modify section five point seven point five point I point two detached houses maximum size to modify the maximum size of single family cottage. Uh, this text amendment is countywide. Mr. White.
Yes, sir. All right. So this, uh, this is a minor, uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance. So presently cottage units are, uh, capped at twelve hundred gross square feet. Uh, and they're further limited to, uh, eight hundred square feet, uh, for the footprint or the ground level, uh, which requires an additional four hundred square feet to be built, uh, vertically. Uh, and so what we've done is made a modest amendment to, uh, permit cottages that are specifically for, uh, seniors fifty-five and up. Uh, they can have the full twelve hundred square feet, uh, on a single level. And so that'll help with accessibility, uh, and, uh, and not have, uh, requiring them to have to climb stairs to fully utilize their space. So we're making this, this modest text amendment, uh, right now related to cottage units. Uh, and then, uh, the discussion we had this morning in PEX, uh, will consider whether this particular proposal should extend to all cottage units, uh, when we have that discussion later this, this summer. This will staff recommends, uh, approval, uh, for proposal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White. Um, go ahead and open the floor to anyone wishing to speak in support of this application.
And if you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a, uh, using a phone. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
Okay. Let's open it up for anyone in opposition.
And opposition, pound two or use the raise hand feature, please. And no hands raised at this time, sir.
All right. And again, Mr. White, if you wouldn't mind, restate your recommendation.
Approval.
All right. Uh, and commissioners, this is, uh, agenda item twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-five. Uh, essentially a text amendment that will, is countywide. Um, I will take a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this item.
All right.
PEX.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cochran Johnson. Uh, seeing no hands raised, I'm gonna go ahead and move into the roll. Commissioner Rader.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry. Mr. Terry. All right. Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, that is six zero in the affirmative for that. We're gonna move on to N eighteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-six. Uh, this is for Commission Districts Two and Super Six. Application of Director of Planning and Sustainability for text amendment to Emory Village Overlay, section three point twenty-two, to allow the limited sale of beer, wine, and spirits as an accessory retail use for off-site consumption at any location within the overlay district. Um, Mr. White.
Uh, it's actually me again.
Oh. This is Bragg. Apologies. Go ahead.
No, no, no problem at all. Um, so this is a text amendment, um, to update, um, the Emory Village Overlay to allow, um, the sale of, um, spirits as an accessory to retail use. Um, as we drafted, after we drafted this text amendment, a number of issues came up, um, both from our legal department and from the, um, proposed, um, market. So, um, staff is currently requesting a two-cycle deferral, um, so that we can work with Emory Village stakeholders, um, our legal team, um, and potentially get feedback from US commissioners too on the proposed changes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Bragg. Um, Mr. Metalski, let's open the floor to anyone who wishes to speak in support of this application.
Yes, sir. And if you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And at this time, there are no hands raised, sir.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition.
And for opposition, pound two or the raise hand feature, please. And no hands at this time, sir.
All right. And again, Ms. Bragg, your recommendation is a two-cycle deferral?
Correct.
All right. Uh, again, this is for, uh, N eighteen, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-six. Uh, with, uh, I guess focused in on Commission Districts Two and Super Six. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Um, I will move approval of the two-cycle deferral for discussion. I have a question.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second and a comment.
All right. Commissioner Rader first, then Commissioner Terry.
Ms. Bragg, where are we on the, uh, process of other amendments to the Emory Village Overlay? Because I don't want that process to end up getting bogged down with this particular, um, you know, stakeholder-driven, um, application. So could you tell us a little bit about where we are with that?
Absolutely. So the, um, Emory Village Alliance has held a number of public meetings. Um, most recently, I believe about a week ago, um, a joint meeting with the Druid Hills Community Association and the Emory Village Alliance. Um, and they have drafted a number of, uh, proposed tax amendments to that overlay. And staff, um, has a in-depth meeting planned with them for, um, I believe it's June ninth. We have about two and a half hours set aside to go through their proposed tax amendments. Um, so that will be the focus of that meeting. However, we will discuss this proposed text amendment, um, with them at that time.
Okay. So if there are any elements of this text amendment that could be integrated into theirs, then we could do that and, um, not wait the two month, or, uh, the two cycles in order to address it again, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Uh, my motion holds.
All right. Commissioner Terry.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Resigning Officer. My internet just completely dropped, just immediately. Uh, what, can you tell me what happened?
Uh, uh, on N, uh, seventeen, it was approved six zero.
Okay. I would have voted yes, just for the record.
I understood. That's it. Okay. All right. Uh, commissioners, unless there's any other comments, we'll move into the roll for this one. Again, this is, uh, for N eighteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-six, affecting Commission Districts Two and Super Six. Commissioner Rader.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochran Johnson.
Aye.
And chair votes aye on that as well. That's seven zero in the affirmative for a two-cycle deferral. And, uh, commissioners, we're almost there. Uh, N nineteen.
Don't, don't, don't tease us like that.
Uh, N nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, fourteen eighty-seven. This is a text amendment for all districts, application of the Director of Planning and Sustainability for Text Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance, Chapter Twenty-seven, to amend Article Two District Regulations and to amend Article Five Site Design and Building Form Standards to increase maximum building height allowed in the OD, that's Office Distribution Zoning District, with limitations. This text amendment is countywide. Uh, Mr. White.
Uh, this proposal, uh, allows for, uh, greater than fifty foot, uh, maximum building heights in the OD zoning district, uh, subject to, uh, conditions. Uh, just for full disclosure, this is, uh, related to, uh, N thirteen and fourteen, uh, that you discussed earlier. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, given the discussions regarding that particular proposal, uh, we're going to recommend a thirty day deferral. Uh, they'll also give some additional time for legal staff to ensure that the proposal's in the correct form, uh, for your consideration.
Okay. Um, Mr. Metalski, if we could, go ahead and open the floor up to anyone wishing to speak in support of the application.
Yes, sir. If you'd like to speak in support of this application, please identify by using the raise hand feature or pound two if you are on a phone. And we have a request from Jan Dunaway. I'll ask Jan to unmute. If she'd like to start her video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Jan Dunaway again, four six seven two Felswood Drive, Stone Mountain. Um, what a night, guys. Um, I do believe that after reviewing this, um, ordinance where the height was thirty-five feet, which is the height we allow for homes. Uh, I don't understand how we had it so low, and I do believe it needs to be increased. And goodness, I hope you guys can get this all straightened out in the next thirty days because our movie studio does require that. That is the requirement of the movie production, the, the movie companies, not, uh, um, AK. So I hope we can get this worked out, but I am in support of it. I stayed here long enough to show my support.
Thank you, Ms. Dunaway.
At this time, I'm seeing no additional hands raised, sir.
All right, Mr. Metalski, let's open it up to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition.
And if you'd like to speak in opposition on this one, pound two or the raise hand feature. And we have a request from Mary Webb. I'll ask her to unmute. If she'd like to start a video, she may. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Mary Webb. I live at eight nine one Fire Sideways on Mountain, Georgia. Um, I'm against it. Um, you guys heard my previous statements about the movie, uh, proposal, movie studio proposal. Um, basically, I can remember back when we had the community involvement, uh, the layer that we had even before we, uh, you guys presented it to the community at large. And I remember there was a back and forth about the height, um, where, uh, someone within the pond company said, yeah, let's go tall in that area. And then another developer said no, based on the height of the road, um, that it would not fit the area if they went several stories up, you know? So that was why they went back to, uh, thankfully, the neighborhood center, the smaller, uh, heights of the building. So, um, when you look around to Cap County, I don't know who, who's what districts i- is what, but, um, I personally think about, uh, Peachtree Industrial. My son went to school there at, at, uh, Magnet School through school choice. Um, and I've seen the area change. And it's a lot of jagged buildings, a lot of odd heights. Um, it feels very clumsy. Um, I'm sure the buildings are nice and everything, but just for the community and, and the look and the feel, it doesn't feel right. Um, and, um, we all know that regardless of whether the movie studio comes or not, that something good is coming for this area because this area is blessed. Um, so, um, just in keeping in line with, uh, the higher, the height, we're on a hill here. Uh, and then it goes down drastically where our little speed, speed racers love to race at night and at all hours. Um, but, um, it, it wouldn't fit our area. So I, I understand that you're looking at the whole area for, I guess, other future development. And I don't know where y'all live, but I don't know how y'all would feel if it was coming right next door to y'all because it, that's what you guys are talking about, is bringing it right next door to, um, a lot of different subdivisions and a lot of different communities that sit in a food desert. You know, a mile around us, we're right in the middle of a food desert that, that property right there is. So, um, I, I, I'm just against it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Webb.
And at this time, there are no additional hands raised, sir.
Initial hands. Okay. All right. Well, um, you know, just a, a, a comment, uh, uh, on the Peachtree Industrial area, that area is going through a transition. Um, and, uh, there will be some jagged appearance in buildings as communities go through transitions. But, uh, again, design standards that are sort of embodied in what the municipalities along Peachtree Industrial have been doing, I think, will work to address those issues, uh, as redevelopment opportunities come along. Um, and then finally, just on the topic itself of, um, building heights, uh, there is a community that I'm familiar with that actually has a building minimum height for, uh, what would be an M-one zoning district, but something where you're expecting, um, new development activities and office distribution warehouse type uses typically want taller buildings. So, um, uh, this may be appropriate, uh, for sort of positioning to Cap County for future growth. Uh, with that said, Uh with that said, um Commissioners, uh let me just restate that this is a text amendment for all districts, this is agenda item N nineteen twenty twenty-two fourteen eighty-seven and um Mr White, if you wouldn't mind reiterate the recommendation?
A thirty-day deferral.
Thirty-day deferral, okay Commissioners?
Make a motion to defer for thirty days, public uh this comment.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that, and and I do have a comment.
All right, uh Commissioner Larry Johnson, did you have a comment?
No sir.
Okay, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yeah, just one quick point to uh or address Ms Webb directly, you are right about uh the food desert and without getting out over my skis, we have been approached by an international grocer to put a uh grocery store in that area. And I won't say who right now until I get a little more details, but we're all well aware of exactly where you are and for the record, I live about a mile and a half north of Memorial Drive. Uh and I've lived there for twenty-eight years. So that is my comment.
All right, Commissioner Bradshaw, thank you so much, uh Commissioners, we're gonna move into the roll call, Commissioner Raider.
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Larry Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Dave uh Davis Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cochrane Johnson.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, uh Commissioners, that wraps up our agenda for the zoning meeting.
Move your adjourn.
Well, I gotta walk on, I gotta walk on now, no.
Uh I just wanted to say Commissioners, uh it has been uh it's been a it's been a good year so far, I sure appreciate working with all of you. Monday of course is Memorial Day, so I hope that whatever festivities or acknowledgements you guys do along with our residents, uh please remember our veterans that have served us. And uh with that, Commissioner Raider, I'll take a motion.
I take a second, I'm second.
There's a second.
There's a second, a motion second, all right, we'll do this by hands and voice, everybody, motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, have a good one.
Bye.
Bye bye.